Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 3:03 on Wednesday, December 11th, 2024. We have packed chambers today for this city commission meeting and public hearing. I want to welcome everyone to City Hall. Before we get started, it is my honor and privilege to introduce the very Reverend Timothy Holido Co-Cathedral of St. Thomas Moore Leadership, who is here to provide the invocation. It's great to see you, Father. If you want to join us right here, please stand for the invocation.
As bow our heads. Lord, I ask your blessing on these men and women who have been elected to serve the people of our beloved city and all who are gathered here at this meeting. Grant these public servants wisdom and help. Help them have a spirit of collaboration, mutual respect, and unity as they work together on the issues important to our community. May they seek the common good above all and remember the poor and those in need. May their work and decisions benefit us all and grant them the vision to find solutions to the problems of our time. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend, thank you so very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Okay, Commissioner Porter, are you with us? We do not have Commissioner Porter online yet. All right, I would like to go ahead and entertain a motion. Commissioner Porter is sick. We hope she feels well. We appreciate her not coming and infecting everyone. I know what's going around Leon County right now, but when we get...
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The motion is to allow Commissioner Porter to participate virtually if we can get the connection and if she feels well enough. Made by Commissioner Richardson, signed by Mayor Pro Tim. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes four zero. Y'all, please let us know if Commissioner Porter does in fact join us. That'd be great. All right, Mr. Manager. We've got a full meeting today, and we have a public hearing at 6 o'clock. Colleagues, we will be breaking around 5:30 to come back for the public hearing. And then any business that we do not deal with before our break, we will obviously pick up immediately after the public hearing. Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
The attachments to items 1201 and 1206 have been updated. Additionally, we've added item 703, which is the acceptance of the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls Annual Report. We've added that to your agenda, along with item 1208, which seeks the approval of the Recommendation of Award for Armed and Unarmed Security Guard Services. That's from Chief Gene Sanders. And finally, we've deleted from this agenda, and we will reschedule it for the January 15th meeting, the Update on Safe Streets for All.
Okay. Remind me real quick, what is the new agenda item number for the Commission on Status of Women and Girls presentation?
Item 703.
703, okay, excellent. All right, wonderful. Any questions on the agenda as modified? Sounds great. Colleagues, if you would like to join me for three presentations, you are more than welcome to down at the well. I am sorry that Commissioner Porter is unable to join us today for the first recognition, this proclamation. It was at her request, but she has asked us to move forward with this proclamation. I would like to ask Mr. Demetrius Bronka with the Capital City Cyclists, please come join me. Any other member of the cyclist organization that is here, please come join us as well. Demetrius, it's great to see you. Thank you very much. Certainly do appreciate it. So ladies and gentlemen, World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims was actually at the end of November. This is the first meeting that we have had since the Day of Remembrance, so it's only appropriate for us to provide this proclamation in the honor of the Day of Remembrance today. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation, whereas World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims is commemorated on the third Sunday of November each year, and whereas 1.19 million people lose their lives in traffic crashes across the world each year, and whereas between 20 and 50 million people suffer non-fatal injuries and long-term disabilities due to traffic accidents, and whereas the United States Motor Vehicle Crash Death Rate is the highest amongst all high-income countries, and whereas the United States Motor Vehicle Crash Death Rate is 2.3 times higher than the average of high-income countries, the death rate for those outside of motor vehicles is increasing ever faster, and whereas people continue to die or be seriously injured in traffic crashes every year, and whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention observes these deaths and injuries are preventable. Now therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims read into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed with my signature, John Evans Daly, dated December 11th, 2024. It is my honor and privilege, Demetrius, to present this proclamation to you and on behalf of the organization as well. Thank you, and I'd like to invite you to say a prayer.
Moments like this in my life, I welcome. I welcome these moments, and they bring a measure of something. But I'll be honest, I don't really want to be here. I don't really like this life that I live. But I don't have a choice. As long as there's wind in my lungs and a beat in my heart, I'm going to keep moving because 10 years ago, my son Anthony, my best friend in the world, was run over and killed by a grown man who knew better, but continued and chose to drive his vehicle while operating a phone. Anthony was hit from behind and literally run over. And that day changed my life, and it set me upon the path that I tread today. Anthony was a joy, not just to me and his mother and his brothers, but to the 15 or so people who have approached me since his death and told me that he was their best friend. He was a joy to his extended family. My mom reminded me over Thanksgiving this year that Anthony was the one who instigated the Uno Games. Anthony was the one who looked forward to the family gatherings because he enjoyed spending time with the people that loved him and the people he loved. Anthony grew up to be my best friend, and I credit him with saving my life once before he was born. And once after he died, about six months after he died, I received a handwritten note from him. That handwritten note said, "Nothing is impossible." Impossible is a word used by the weak to justify giving up, never give up. So here I am today, on this Day of Remembrance, when we are remembering all of the traffic victims. Anthony graduated from Leon High School. He worked at a local bagel shop and was attending classes at TCC, which is where he was headed on a Friday afternoon when he was struck and killed. Anthony inspired me in life and has inspired since his death. I want to take this moment in the spotlight to enlist your help and to enlist your help. In the 2024 Legislative Session across the street, I showed up every day before work, and I was able to usher a bill through the House of Representatives sponsored by Allison Tant. That bill was assigned through three committees where it received unanimous and bipartisan, unopposed support, only for that bill to die in the Senate because one man in a position of power, in his ignorance, chose to block it. That name, the name on that bill was the Anthony Phoenix Bronka Act. Therefore, I have embarked on a mission, along with other like-minded people in the Florida Hands-Free Coalition, a coalition that consists of cyclists, pedestrians, insurance companies, and law enforcement. As a coalition, we are contacting and traveling to every county commission and every major city in the state of Florida, where we are urging those elected leaders to pass a resolution urging the legislature of the state of Florida to do better and to make Florida a hands-free state. Hands-free laws have shown to consistently, predictably, measurably save up to 10% to 25% of road traffic fatalities. In the state of Florida, where 10 people a day die on our streets, that's up to two people a day. That's two families that don't have to live through what I'm living through. That's two lives that would be saved every single day and allowed to live the way they intended to. So I think, I want to thank the city commissioners and the city of Tallahassee and the mayor for this proclamation, and I want to enlist your help in doing more. We need to do more. Our children are worth it. Our families are worth it. We must do better. Thank you very much.
All right, colleagues, if you'll stay with me. Right now, I would like to recognize Ashley Edwards, Director of Parks and Recreation, for a special recognition as well. Ashley?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. It is my pleasure and honor tonight to be here before you to introduce and congratulate the 2024 Neighborhood Leadership Academy graduates. These neighborhood leaders have just recently completed a 10-week program where they've gotten a behind-the-scenes look at all that we do here in the city, all the city services we provide. They've had fun. They've learned a lot. They've made great contacts with the outstanding city staff that provide the services to their neighborhoods day in and day out. And I think they've also, I hope, have left with more knowledge than they came to us with and in a willingness to then serve as an ambassador to go back to their neighborhoods to share the information, to share the contacts, so that those of us in our Neighborhood Affairs Division can continue to serve them as they continue to strive to have the best vibrant neighborhoods possible in the entire community. So with that, I would like to recognize each of the graduates. If you would hold your applause till the end, we have several of them with us tonight. And those that are here, if you would come forward, I know we have others that are hopefully watching at home. So with that, I'm going to call your names if you'll come up, those that are here. Brandon Johnson from Buckwood Neighborhood, Vanessa McLaughlin from Charleston Square, Evan Smith from Chezois, Bessie Evans from Alberta Empire Neighborhood Association, Tina Reason from Greater Appalachia Ridge, Vanessa Williams, Greater Bond Neighborhood, Donald Glasper, Griffin Heights, Mark Fontenot from Hillcrest Court, Sylvia Beecham from Jake Gaither, Juanita Thompson from Sunshine Estates, Edra Taylor from Jake Gaither Neighborhood Association, Latonya Johnson from Jake Gaither also, Gerald Pfeifer from Ox Bottom Crest, Chris Goodwin from Pine Grove, Whitney Moore from South City, Barbara King from the Sunshine Neighborhood Association, Jeanette Saylor from Tallahassee Highlands, Courtney Hodgins from Village Square, and Lisa Hill from Settler Springs. Your 2024 Neighborhood Leadership Academy graduates, let's give them a hand.
Mr. Steve Beasley, will you please come join me? And I would like to ask Mr. Beasley's family and dear friends, come on, everybody, come on up. Let's surround him with love. Come on up. Ladies and gentlemen, as the Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, I have the authority to recognize outstanding members of this community, and I take this extremely seriously. This is not something that we do often at all. Let me introduce you to Mr. Steve Beasley. Mr. Steve Beasley is a sharp businessman with a servant's heart. Steve strives to make a positive and sustainable impact on Tallahassee's south side, north side, east side, west side, all over this community. Steve is a Tallahassee native and is the son of former Florida A&amp;M University Professor Sylvester Jap Beasley, which explains Steve's love for FAMU. Steve developed a passion for photography while attending FAMU High and then moved on to his beloved university, where he majored in Business Administration and minored in Accounting and Marketing. In 1965, Steve combined his degree, his passion for photography, his entrepreneurial spirit, where he began a photography and advertising business, Beasley and Associates. And in 1976, he established a renowned Capital Outlook newspaper. And after 50 years at the helm of his advertising business, Steve finally retired and focused fully on his service. Check curiosity. How many of y'all, raise your hand, you know Steve Beasley here. Look at everybody. Look at everybody. More than 30 years after helping to found the MLK Foundation, Steve serves as the organization's CEO. The foundation aligns with so much of what Steve stands for, promoting charity, community, and leadership, while also spreading the spirit of community pride and equality embodied by Dr. King. Steve considers himself blessed as a businessman and as a person, which inspires him to give back. During his youth, his family stressed the importance of civic engagement. The environment of deeply valuing service and love inspired him to do the same for the youth on the south side of Tallahassee. And as a result, he has started not one, not two, but three Boy Scout troops and dedicates his time to mentoring. Many of us were first introduced also to Steve Beasley through his contributions founding the Soul Santa Program here in our community. And for decades, he has been an ardent champion of the children of our community, literally touching the lives of tens of thousands of children during the holiday season for decades upon decades. Mr. Beasley and his late wife Nikki, a school administrator for Leon County Schools, were married for 38 years, and they have a beautiful daughter and two grandchildren who are with us as well. In the 1600s in Western Europe, the key to the city was always presented to the one member of the community that could be trusted the most because back then, the cities were walled. And to be entrusted with the key to the city meant that not only did we believe in the impact that you do to the community at large, but it allows you to come freely to and from because the community trusts you and loves you. Today, the key to the city is more of a ceremonial role, but nonetheless, it is the highest award that the mayor can bestow upon a citizen. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please stand? And it is my honor and privilege today to present to Stephen K. Beasley for outstanding service to the City of Tallahassee, dated December 11th, 2024. Ladies and gentlemen, the key to the city. Ladies and gentlemen, you may be seated. Mr. Steve Beasley. Steve, the podium is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Tallahassee. After 82 years of living here, I say it again, I love Tallahassee. And naturally, I love my family, but I have a lot of friends here, but I want to first give thanks to a few people in Tallahassee, family, Communication Department, Allison, is she around? Allison helps with the latest book we did. We did a history of the boycott and the lunch counter. And if you don't have it, you can see it on our website, mlkfoundation.net. It's a 100-page book that the Communication Department did the research on it, and the city got a lot of free space in it. I do have a retired chairman of our board, I'd like to understand Judge David Frank. Judge David Frank was chairman of our board.
Hey, Judge.
For over 15 years, and every year, he put me back at the head of it, so I thank him for that. Police Department, the Fire Department play a big hand in our Soul Santa Program. And we'd like for our young people to see the police and the Fire Department in a positive role, not when they come out to break up a fight, this, that, and the other. Mr. Barnes helped us with our transportation. We had two buses hauling people to our Thanksgiving dinner this year at the American Legion Home, and I think we ran out of plates at 600, and we sent out and got some more plates and kept on getting up. We have several other programs. We do back-to-school supplies, and Mr. Barnes helped us again with the little backpacks and tablets and this, that, and the other. And it put Tallahassee in a positive mode for our young people because young people are our leaders of tomorrow. But I want to thank everyone first, my family, this Cheryl. I've never seen a person spoil at 52 years old. My granddaughter, Mariana, she's at Tuskegee Institute. My daughter finished at Tuskegee. And my real friend, Dr. Nicole Mountain, she finished her coastwork in April, and then there'll be a party, folks. But she passed all of her paperwork, so you can call her doctor now. She was Miss Florida A&amp;M University. And I have to plug the whole family. My sister, Leke, who's deceased, was Miss Florida A&amp;M University. And Cheryl was Miss Florida A&amp;M University High School. So we had three Miss FAMUs in the family. And Tuskegee better watch out. I really want to thank mainly our 150 volunteers, the persons that get out and beg for money, supplies. We don't necessarily need money all the time. They can donate in good, like backpacks, and we get a lot of the food donated for our 600 Thanksgiving dinner and, but thanks, our 100, and I'm sure they're watching on TV, and there'll be a party soon. But thanks, everyone, especially the city commissioner, the mayor, and my real friend back there, the city manager. If I'm on the utility advisory board, and I'd like for y'all to give the city utility department a hand for when the last hurricane we had, most of us got our lights back on within 24 hours. And a lot of lights were out, but I was shocked. I got mine on in about three hours because I live between United, well, the golf course and, what's the name of the lab? The magnetic lab. So I contribute living near the magnetic lab. Get my lights on before things go boom. But thanks again, and I say you're the best person for last. Thanks, God, for giving me this 82 years. And I don't need 82 more, but I need a few more.
Let me just say to Mr. Steve Beasley, we met December 21st, it's going to be 39 years ago. He took my wedding pictures. And they're still good, and we're still married. So thank you, Steve, for what you mean, not only to my family, but to this community, the children, the faces that I see when I go out and see the Soul Santa that you're doing. I mean, they're, they're, they just light up, and they look forward to this every year, I'm sure. Thank you for what you're doing. Keep doing it. I know you're only 28 years old, so just, just keep doing it, and we'll, we'll be right there to support you. Thank you so much. And thank you to your family, my Sarraz, and your mother, who's leaning over there, the threshold, looking down upon you all. She's my Sarraz as well. So thank you all. You're in great hands. These girls are going to take good care of you.
Thank you, Mayor. I am just honored to be able to say a few words on Steve's behalf. He has been like a neighbor to me on the south side of town for the last 30 years. But Steve has contributed so much to this community. I've been close to his family over the years. His late wife Nikki was the principal at, was it Weston? NIMs, I'm sorry, NIMs, yes, yes. And Fairview during the time that I was on the school board. And so we had an opportunity to work in a professional capacity, but they have always been very good friends of mine, and I have certainly witnessed all the work that Steve has put into this community over the years to make Tallahassee be that all-America city, and I say this all the time, that all-America city for all of her citizens, regardless of where they live. And Steve, we thank you so much. You know, there are times when I call Steve and I'll say, Steve, because people say the same thing about me, but I can't keep up with him. At 82 years old, I can't keep up with him. He's always out there serving the community and making life better for the City of Tallahassee and her residents and guests. So again, Steve, thank you for all that you do. We appreciate you.
Thank you, and good evening. You know, it's an important key when it's that big. We've been looking for the door. It opens. I'm sure it's around here somewhere. But I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Beasley. I think we first met shortly before I came to office, but it's been great to see all of your work, particularly Soul Santa. You know, I think that holds a dear place in a lot of people's hearts, whoever came from a family that needed the community to step up and deliver Christmas. And I have fond memories of the folks that did that when I was a child, both in the Fire Department and at the City of Tallahassee. It may have been you, I don't know. But we do appreciate your work, and congratulations.
I left the best for last. The City Recreation Department, without them, Soul Santa Claus wouldn't... The City Recreation Department, without them, Soul Santa Claus wouldn't be as big as it is. We have a member from the Recreation Department there. There's an article in Capital Look Glass about the history of Soul Santa, why it has existed three decades, and I say simply because of the children. They keep showing up.
In the spirit of the presentation, let me put in a shameless plug for the Soul Santa Program. It is not this weekend, but it will be on December 21st. It is a great program in partnership between the MLK Foundation, many other partners, but the city of Tallahassee as well. Of course, we are still accepting gift donations for the kids, and come on out and support the program, and it's a lot of fun, lot of fun. Okay, Mr. Manager, do we have any appearances before this board? Yes, I see we have one, two, three, four appearances. Let's start with 7.01, the Independent Ethics Board 2024 Annual Report. Mr. Floyd?
And, Mr. Mayor, I received a communication from Mr. Floyd that he will not be able to be with us, so the report will be presented by the Chair, Kristin Costa, and the Vice Chair may be here.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Commission. My name is Kristin Costa, and I am here on behalf of the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board. I currently am serving as the Chair, and Chief Kelly, who's here with me today, is the Vice Chair. The purpose of my address today is the City of Tallahassee ordinance directs that the Board provide an annual report to the City Commission specifically referencing training and the Campaign Contribution Refund. So in keeping with the ordinance, we will briefly summarize the annual report, a copy which you have received, and there are additional copies in the back. Our mission is to provide the actual and perceived integrity of our city government and to prevent unethical conduct before it occurs. Everything we do is towards that aim. Currently, we have a full board of seven members. Myself, Physician Assistant Kristin Costa, currently serving as the Chair, Vice Chair is Retired Chief of Police Patrick Kelly, Attorney Carlos Ray, Attorney Rika Calhoun, Attorney Adam Comissar, Attorney Brian Smith, and Attorney Caroline Clankie. Our staff includes Executive Director, Ethics Officer Dwight Floyd, Staff Assistant and Trainer Tasker Leverson Green, and Legal Advisor Board Attorney John Reed. On page nine, you will see our strategic planning. We maintain a three-year strategic plan, which sets the priorities and dictates the direction of the staff. Next, you will see our advisory opinions. During the past fiscal year, we have issued several advisory opinions to help guide the city's public officials and employees before they enter in, either engaged in activities that may be prohibited, or to reassure them that certain activities were actually okay. I'm not going to read each of these to you as they're listed in the report, but you can see that we advised on various issues from doing business with the city to accepting gifts. When we found it acceptable for the requestor to go forth with the act in question, there was often the decision on their part not to do so because even the appearance of impropriety. Thus, the advisory opinions have served us well in the representation of Tallahassee residents. The staff spends a great deal of time developing and delivering ethics trainings. The Executive Director, Mr. Floyd, has demonstrated a tremendous understanding of ethics and its importance. He relates well to the employees and appreciates their participation in developing annual ethics trainings for all employees. The staff often receives compliments from employees, particularly from the Training Section in the Department of Human Resources and Workforce Development. We want to express our appreciation for the partnership in developing and delivering ethics training in person and online. Our staff has expressed their pleasure in engaging firefighters, various employees in Star Metro, law enforcement personnel, both sworn and unworn, the youth in the Tallahassee Future Leaders Academy, and many other employees throughout the city. The Campaign Contribution Refund Program, on page 15, under the charter, a registered voter of the city of Tallahassee may claim a refund equal to the voter's monetary contribution up to $25. In the summer of 2024, the Board implemented a full-scale promotion to inform the public of the program. Based on the numbers, it did not have an impact. For the 2024 campaign, we refunded fifteen registered voters for a total of $375. Based on the staff analysis, in states and cities where such a program is successful, there is a commitment to public funding. We don't have that kind of infrastructure in the city or the state. While we do not have high expectations for the success of this program, we will continue to support it as required by the city charter. The next page is complaints. The Board responded to fifty documented calls and emails alleging ethics violations and determined legal sufficiency in five of the cases. Nine allegations were investigated within the five cases. Upon investigation, the Board unanimously decided in each case not to find probable cause and dismissed the complaints. By conducting a thorough investigation of these matters, we were able to assure the public that the accusations were untrue. Fiscal Responsibility. The staff has proven to be fiscally responsible. In 2022, the Board upgraded the Administrative Specialist position from part-time to full-time. During the past fiscal year, we spent additional funds to address adverse legislation and promote the Campaign Contribution Refund Program. In past years, we have also acquired outside investigators when needed. But through it all, we have maintained without a budget increase and ended the year with a positive balance. Before I conclude, I wanted to say that recently, the voters approved two charter amendments that originated with the Board. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this would not have happened without your support, so we thank you for your continued commitment to the Board. We know our work is not always popular, especially among those that find it bothersome to complete the annual ethics training, or those who are in the subject of an investigation. However, it's essential to remember that our efforts are not in vain. Just as cybersecurity measures are necessary to prevent severe threats, our work is critical in safeguarding against corruption. Even one unchecked corrupt individual can lead to severe consequences for our city. The Board is committed to continuing its mission in the interest of the Tallahassee residents for whom this Board, the city officials, and employees serve. Thank you very much for your time. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. This may be a question for you, Madam Chair, or maybe a question for the attorney. Kind of briefly and in passing, someone who I know who works for the Elections Commission indicated that the 20-day reimbursement, the $25 reimbursement that we, that we do, that there might be some, may have been some changes there? Are we up to date on what those are, and if that is still something that we should be doing? I mean, it looks like we're not using it heavily, but if we could check into that to make sure that we're not in any violation or what have you. I know it's been in place for a while, but they kind of mentioned to me that that might not be something we should be continuing.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Commissioner, I'm not familiar with any changes to that at the state level, but I'll be happy to check into it for you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions? Excellent report.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and service. Tell Dwight we said hi. Okay, we are on item number 7.02. Mr. Manager, I'll kick it over to you. It's the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Report and Recommendations, and I know that you'll briefly introduce and turn it over.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask Dr. Kimball Thomas to introduce the Chair of the Committee. And while Dr. Thomas is coming forward, I'd also like to acknowledge the work of Commissioner Richardson, who represents the City Commission on this committee. And so he attends the meetings and provides good feedback and support, and we certainly appreciate that. Dr. Thomas, will you please introduce Mr. Daniels?
Dr. Thomas, good to see you. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, City Manager Goode, respective officials on the dais. I'd like to introduce Dr. Chris Daniels. He's the Chair of our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. He's here to make brief comments, and we'll move forward from there.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, so on behalf of the Tallahassee Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, it is a pleasure to submit the 2024 AHAC Report of Recommendations. The committee spent many hours in discussion on multiple topics such as the city's 2024-25 HUD annual plan, the city's 2024 strategic plan, and a full AHAC member orientation. Discussions also included topics requested by members, such as an update to the Live Local Act, the county's new home ownership development program, innovative affordable housing programs, Community Reinvestment Act funding, and equity sharing for down payment assistance. Thank you so much for allowing us to serve our community and city in this way. We extend our deep appreciation for your service and your continued commitment to affordable housing in the city of Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, recognize for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Chris as the Chairman of our committee and the staff for the tremendous job that they do. Gene Amison, Dr. Kimball Thomas, of course. As you all know, affordable housing is the number-two top issue in our strategic plan. And they do a tremendous job of partnering with area agencies. I also serve on the Board of the Tallahassee Lindas Consortium, which is a partner of ours. We just had our Board meeting earlier today, Habitat for Humanity, and others that are interested in providing affordable housing for individuals and families in our community. And so it's been a treat and a pleasure to serve with those individuals who come to that committee, the AHAC Committee. There is one with the county as well as the city, and we meet jointly. So we are communicating and coordinating our efforts to provide that housing here in the Tallahassee and Leon County community. And so, Chris, again, thank you for the, or Dr. Daniels, thank you for the work that you do as our Chair, and thanks to all of those that serve on a volunteer basis on the AHAC Committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Certainly do appreciate it. Dr. Thomas, you want to wrap it up?
Yes, as you can see, per our recommendation, we recommend, there's no new recommendations from the AHAC this past calendar year, and we recommend option one.
Excellent. Sounds good. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Option one is simply to accept the 2024 report. Is there a motion?
Move option number one is recommended by staff, Mr. Mayor.
Properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes four, zero. Colleagues, there was no recommendation on 7.01 with the Independent Ethics Board, but why don't we go ahead and just formalize? Do we have any comments from the public on the Independent Ethics Board?
We do not have comments.
We don't? But just for uniform sake, is there a motion to accept the Independent Ethics Board 2024 report as well?
So moved.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question for the City Manager. I sat in on a webinar hosted by the Florida League of Cities yesterday that dealt with ethics not from a, a performance perspective, if you will, but during times of disaster, accidents, and, and my question would be, Mr. City Manager, does our staff, particularly at the administrative level or leadership executive team level, do they, are they required to take that same type of ethics training?
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yes, sir, actually, thank you for the question. And it may differ slightly, but, for example, I'm a member of the Florida City County Managers' Association. That's, that's a division, for all intents and purposes, of the League of Cities, and that, that kind of training, we take every year.
Okay.
You know, the, the theme may differ, but that's part of the association and the membership that we're, you know, we participate in as well.
Yeah, it was a very informative webinar, and they, the presenter was very well-versed in the issue, and it was just something that we had not discussed before in terms of our executive-level team and professional staff getting that type of training. But I just wanted to make sure that we were, in fact, exposing them to that, because it, there were some really good issues that were discussed during that webinar. I learned a lot.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion, simply to accept the report as presented by the Chair of the Ethics Board. Motion was made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes four, zero. Okay, we are now on item number 7.03, the acceptance of the Tallahassee-Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls Annual Report. I know that my office is supposed to introduce this. Let me go ahead and just jump to Stephanie Schumate, the Executive Director, and if you wouldn't mind introducing your leadership and all members of the Board that are here.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mayor and Commissioners, for having us today for our annual report presentation, and congratulations, Commissioner Richardson, and if you're listening, Commissioner Porter, on your reelections. So we know we're here in the home stretch of the end of 2024, as we all head into the holiday season, and we're excited to be here. And our wonderful Chair and Vice Chair, we have Dr. Adela Gademi. She finished her doctorate while serving as Chair this past year, so that's a huge Chair Gademi is Executive Director at United Faculty of Florida. And then we have Dr. Jasmine Bryant as our Vice Chair, and they're both actually going into serving their second term as Chair and Vice Chair this year. And Dr. Bryant is a professor and researcher at FAMU. And we have our wonderful other Commissioners here showing some great support. We have Commissioner Carolyn McClellan, Commissioner Tiffany Martin, Commissioner Amanda Liedy, Commissioner Judy, Dr. Judy Mandrell, Commissioner Ashley Gilli. So our wonderful women, did anyone else sneak in? I thought I saved the right amount of seats, so we're good. So I'm going to turn it over to Chair Gademi and Vice Chair Bryant, and they're going to lead you through our great report.
Thank you.
Thank you, and hello, everyone. Thank you again for having us here today. We're really excited to get to give you a bit of an overview of what happened in this last year and a bit of a preview of what's to come for this upcoming year. And so we just have up here the names of who was our leadership team last year that served as the committee co-chair, or the committee chairs, along with Dr. Bryant and I as Chair and Vice Chair. So we are grateful for their ability to serve and all of the contributions that they made, and we're grateful for the service. And I'm going to turn it over then for the next review to go to you.
Yes, so one of the highlights of our 2023-24 year was our Women and Girls Empowerment Summit, and thank you all so much who were able to attend and support that effort. We had our keynote speaker, Dr. Lisa Hinkelmann, who provided us a lot of nationwide data on the issues challenging our girls. And so that provided us some insight to prepare us for our next year, and we'll talk about some of those outcomes. We had five tracks focusing on advocacy, resilience, empowerment, youth, and then we also had our Women Can Run track. We had twenty breakout sessions, and one of the things that we really want to highlight is that there were over 220 attendees. We were really intentional about the time in which this summit was taking place, so that folks who were working and our students across all of our high schools were able to attend, and there was at least one girl from each high school in attendance at the summit. We provided free onsite childcare in partnership with Kids, Inc., which is a really priority area for us, to ensure that childcare is not an issue for those who want to come, especially our women and girls in our community. And then we also secured in-kind and cash sponsorships to assist with having a successful summit.
Yes, and so other highlights, one of the projects we started, and we're looking forward to continuing to work alongside with you all, is the, expanding the parental leave policy within the city as well, along with you and your hard-working staff. Also wanted to inform you about how we've increased our community committee member involvement in the six area, committee areas we have. And doing that has brought a lot of extra expertise and far-reaching networks into the work that we're doing, that's been able to expedite some of the research and the progress that we're making on the different initiatives that we care about, and that accelerated rate is helping us make increased change. So wanted to make sure to highlight for you that we're continuing to hope to see that expand even further this coming year and recruit more wonderful community committee members to help us in this work. And as, as Dr. Bryant mentioned, we have been, you know, providing childcare at any CSWG events that we've had, because we want to make sure that that is a recurring practice, that we can make sure to keep these events accessible to women, especially that are serving as caretakers, to make sure that they're able to attend and be a part of these community events. We also held some candidate forums, and the planning of that took place primarily in the 23-24 year, but we had our events in early October, so the start of this programmatic year. We want to thank Commissioner Richardson for participating and making sure that that was, you know, it was a priority to talk about real issues that we're facing, women and girls in our community, and we're very grateful for that. and girls in our community, and we're very grateful for that. So as you heard from Stephanie, we're back again. We'll be serving again this year together. We're very excited to continue and build the momentum on what we started last year and make sure that by the end of this year, we can have some really far-reaching projects that will make a big difference for the community.
Yes, so this is our current leadership across our six committees, and we're fortunate one of our committee chairs was able to share with us, Commissioner Martin. And in addition to serving for Health and Development Committee as vice chair, I also oversee our organizational and bylaw.
Yes, so what is up next and what are we working on? We are currently in the final stages of the dashboard that we have been developing as well as relaunching the website, so we're really excited about the collaboration that we're in the midst of with various agencies and organizations to make that a reality, and we look forward to that being accessible to the community very soon. And as we move forward in this year, we're going again to continue to prioritize free childcare at any of our events that we have. And again, we are grateful again that Commissioner Richardson had mentioned and brought up during one of the forums, the parental leave policy, so we're hoping we can continue to work with you on that on the city side and see what we can do with you there. One of the other projects that we're in the midst of is about diaper-changing accommodations throughout the city. So one of the things that came up during our research for candidate forums, we found some really great examples of ordinances from across the state of Florida, particularly from Miami-Dade County regarding diaper-changing tables, and so we're really excited to, you know, potentially replicate some of that here and bring that into our community to make a difference. We also are going to be honored to continue to work with the mayor's LGBTQ Advisory Council, and we do have a representative from the CSWG attend those meetings so we can continue to have collaboration there. And we have, you know, we recognize the importance of supporting the initiatives and the projects of other women and girls-serving organizations, so we don't continue to have people working in silos. So it's something we're going to continue to try and go out of our way to make sure we can do and uplift so that we can all have more synergy in what we're doing together.
So how are we getting all of this done, right? Work, continued work. So key areas or strategies that we're leveraging, so hosting issue-oriented events, so that means having town halls, especially having those town halls during times and in locations that are accessible for those who desire to attend, and listening sessions, and that includes listening sessions with women as well as girls in our community. We have 10 monthly standing meetings, and then we're consistently researching about the issues facing women and girls, and we leverage a strategy called our digital resource library where we're looking through published literature as well as looking to see what other cities are doing in those areas. And then we're also working actively to increase awareness regarding issues and education campaigns for women and girls to further alert our community about those priority areas for women and girls in our area.
Just to give you a bit of an overview of the various committees and what are some of the larger overarching projects we'll be working on, we'll just go through a couple for each of them for you now. So the Economic Security Committee is interested in researching what else we can offer in terms of affordable housing and accessible housing, as well as thinking about financial literacy that we can implement further within the community so that we can ensure that women and girls are empowered with the financial literacy tools that they need. Our Education Committee is supporting a trade certification program that is completed upon high school graduation so that folks can be sure to already have, you know, a job lined up and something that can earn them a true income, and increasing access particularly for women in underrepresented fields or predominantly male fields. So that's something that they're looking into, how we can expand and elevate throughout the community. And they're also looking into creating a chronic absenteeism awareness campaign. So those are some of the things that they're working on in that committee. In our Employment and Earnings Committee, we have been brought into work with Kids Incorporated, and we're really excited about the partnership we've been able to form with them there, and excited to see what we're going to do, continue to work on, is bringing to fruition a 24-hour childcare center in Tallahassee. So we're really excited to see what that can do. We found an example of a center that we think encompasses everything that our research has identified that we would want here, and that also is a flag for why our community committee members are so valuable, because that was actually from one of our community committee members that serves on that committee, Anita Bushkniakova, who I believe is here today. And so she actually found this center in Kansas, and so that has been wonderful to see, and we're hoping we can find a way to mirror or go visit and see how we can bring some of those aspects to what we would want to have here. And that committee has also recently held a roundtable with Kids Incorporated with a group of parents. So the parents were brought across from across the community, and they provided us with a lot of really great information, again, to help direct our research towards what type of recommendations could we potentially make or what initiatives could we propose that would be helpful for the direct needs that are being identified. So some of the things that they mentioned was cost, transportation, and then actually also employers, their own employers not being supportive of them actually needing to show up to work slightly late or leave early to pick up and drop off their children at childcare. So there was a lot of anecdotal shares of people having to do that in secret or like sneak out to do that. So we're looking into, you know, what that could look like or how we could help support that as well.
Awesome. As it relates to Health and Development Committee, a few of the areas of priority are enhancing public health messaging at the local level, as well as identifying strategies to engage businesses around the issues relevant to women and girls. So that initiative is Businesses for a Better Tallahassee. And to your point, getting businesses to allow folks to be off to drop and pick up their children, right? How do we get businesses on board with that? Period poverty awareness is a priority area for HDC, and in fact, in January, specifically January 31st, there will be a community-wide menstrual product drive, and so more details are coming in regards to that. And then a couple of other priority areas are mental health with women and girls, and then specifically also perinatal health and well-being, and some of these priority areas were directly brought to us by our community committee members who are working and seeing the disparities in their respective areas. In addition, Political Equity Committee is looking at a few different areas, increasing civic engagement among women and girls, raising awareness regarding restoration of voting rights, increasing regular meetings with the city and county commissioners, so that we can make sure we're prioritizing areas that are a priority to you all as well, and then increasing regular recognition of women and girls within the city and the county for the hard work that they're doing to sustain and contribute to our community. And then lastly, Violence and Safety. A few areas of emphasis for this committee are increasing SAC Pro training, and SAC Pro training is a training to inform businesses and constituents about human trafficking, and so that is one of the key areas, as well as increasing bystander intervention training across businesses and elected, as well as women and girls organizations, and then increasing collaboration with TPD's Youth Advisory Council. Violence and Safety has had a roundtable already with the youth from TPD Advisory to hear the concerns that the youth have regarding their safety and engagement in community. And then lastly, Violence and Safety will continue their research on gun violence and the intersectionality of that with women and girls in our community.
Yes, and we would not be able to end this presentation without thanking the Oasis Center for Women and Girls, who holds the contract for the CSWG staffing and their executive director, Kelly Oddie. And of course, all of you, we're grateful for your partnership and trust in the work and support of the work that we're trying to do, so we're welcome to any questions you might have, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I am pleased to have been able to serve as the city commission's liaison to the board for the past several years, and I've witnessed firsthand the amazing work that Stephanie and the board has done. As you can see, I don't know how they work a full-time job and do all of this at the same time, but the work that they do is so vitally important to our community, and so we want to thank them. I want to recognize my appointee to the board, Pastor Judy Mandrell, who just celebrated 30 years as a pastor and the spiritual leader at Life Changers Church of God in Christ here in Tallahassee. And Pastor Mandrell is responsible for my designation as an honorary sister girl, y'all. I guess that's why I'm continuously appointed to the board of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, but thank you all for the work that you do. As a matter of fact, there were a number of the issues that did come up during that candidate forum that I brought back to the city manager, and I know that he and his staff are working on those, and we hope to have some information real soon on how we can address some of those issues, like the changing tables in men's and women's restrooms and the other issues that were brought up during that lively discussion. So again, thank you all for the work that you do. We look forward to continuing to work with you on those issues impacting women and girls in our community.
Excellent. Any other comments? I too want to thank you all for the great work that y'all do. I appreciate the commission willing to walk with me on the challenge. You've created a 24/7/365 daycare facility and the first municipal one in the state of Florida, and we're going to do it. We have a lot of momentum. Y'all have done a tremendous job. It's time to get back together. Got some great updates as well. Keep up the wonderful work, and we love the partnership. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the report as presented?
I would move acceptance of the report as presented, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson has made the motion, seconded -- or was seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes five zero. Commissioner Porter, thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, at this time, I would like to adjourn the Tallahassee City Commission meeting, and I would like to convene the Sinking Fund Commission and invite Nan Hillis and William McLeod to please come join us. Nan, William, first of all, before I turn it over to the treasurer clerk, let me thank you once again for your service and volunteer on this commission. It's very important. It's great to see y'all, too.
Good to see you.
Absolutely. All right, Mr. Treasurer Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The city staff manages the investments of the city's non-pension funds. We also manage the pension funds, but this item deals with the non-pension funds, but we do so under the guidance of City Commission Policy 234, and staff recently decided to engage a third party to provide some reporting and analysis of that non-pension performance that occurs under this policy. And as part of their initial review of the portfolio and the policy, Segal Marco has recommended some minor policy changes to improve how we use benchmarks and measure and meet our investment objectives, and that's exactly the sort of thing we were hoping they would be able to do for us. And so as a first step, our Investment Advisory Committee, which is the three citizen members of this eight-member Sinking Fund Commission, met in November. They meet quarterly, as you said, Mayor. It's important work. They're also very, very committed. We meet on a quarterly basis, and they bring great ideas, questions, and thoughtful preparation. But in that November meeting, that group approved moving forward with these changes, but as it is a city commission policy, it does come to the full sinking commission for approval. So our recommendation is that the Sinking Fund Commission approve the recommended changes as attached to the agenda item.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. Commissioner Hillis, Commissioner McLeod, any comments, anything? Okay, any questions, comments, before I turn back to our colleagues for a motion? Seeing none. Is there a motion for approval?
I move that we --
Commissioner McLeod moves approval. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hillis. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously seven zero. Do we have any other business to come before the Sinking Fund Commission?
No, sir, we do not.
Boy, that was great.
That was great.
All right, thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming out tonight to participate. I will go ahead and adjourn the Sinking Fund Commission and call the Tallahassee City Commission back into order, and we are now on the consent agenda. All right, Mr. Manager, have we had any items pulled off of the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Excellent. Before I get into it, Commissioner Porter, we are glad that you have joined us. We did take care of the administrative responsibilities, passed a motion allowing you to participate. We certainly hope you feel better. I know what's going around Tallahassee. Hang in there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
Mayor, we do have one speaker who's asked to speak on item 8.13.
8.13?
Yes, sir, Mayor. That is the City Inspector General Updated Employment Agreement.
All right, do we have a motion for the rest of consent?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We're on item number 8.13. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 8.13 is a request for the city commission to approve an updated employment agreement for the city inspector general. As you know, Mr. Dennis Sutton was appointed to serve as city auditor in 2019. In 2020, he took on the responsibilities of city inspector general, and then on November 5th of 2024, the electors of the city of Tallahassee voted to amend the city charter to define the role of the city inspector general by charter rather than by ordinance. Since the city charter no longer references the appointed position of city auditor and the role of the appointed city inspector general is now defined by charter, the employment agreement between Mr. Sutton and the city required updating. The recommended action is just to approve the proposed updated employment agreement with Dennis Sutton for the position of city inspector general and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city commission.
Excellent. Okay, let's go to public comment.
Mayor, we have one speaker, Ernie Payne. This would be a good time to let the public know on this and other items. Each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. There'll be a light in front of the mayor that's green and turns yellow with 30 seconds remaining, at which time I will also give you a heads up before the light turns red.
You name an address for the record, please.
Thank you. Ernie Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. In April, I spoke to you regarding the inspector general's proposed charter amendment, stating my belief that there would still be a gap in the intended independent functioning of the office, but that this could be remedied by including a provision for the appointment of independent legal counsel under the direction of the inspector general when a conflict might arise. During commission discussion prior to the vote, Commissioners Porter, Matlow, Williams, Cox, and Richardson all indicated that you had heard me and that you shared my concern. Each of you requested confirmation from the city attorney that this issue would be addressed before calling for the vote. After receiving this assurance, you voted four to one with the mayor in dissent to send the amendment to the ballot, where it was ultimately ratified by the voters in November. The city attorney's response to your concerns, however, was that the issue would be addressed either through the charter amendment that was to be drafted or by relying on the existing ordinance drafted in 2020 that had assigned the duties of the IG to the city auditor. As it turned out, there was no mention of the independent counsel in the charter amendment. Looking back now at the language in ordinance 20 dash zero dash dash oh dash 22, some inconsistencies with the city charter remain. These include the relevant paragraph that allows for outside counsel to be requested by the city auditor, not the inspector general. Since this ordinance is evidently being relied upon to fill in many of the details regarding the operation of the office of inspector general in its new incarnation, there should be no confusion with regard to how this important office is carried out and by whom. Because of this, I respectfully suggest that in addition to approving Mr. Sutton's employment contract, you direct the city attorney to draft a revision to this ordinance to bring the language more consistently in alignment with the city charter as recently amended by the people. Thank you.
Madam Attorney, comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am currently working with Mr. Sutton to update any ordinances related to this, to the charter amendment. There wasn't quite enough time between the passage of the amendment and this meeting to accomplish that, but I believe we expect to bring those back in January.
Excellent. Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city attorney indicated, we are currently working on revising that ordinance. In addition, though, there are other ordinances in at least one commission policy that needs to be updated at the same time, so we're looking at bringing an omnibus-type agenda item to bring all this stuff at one time rather than do it piecemeal. So we anticipate it being in the January commission meeting.
Wonderful. All right, any questions? Mr. Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Sutton, or Ms. Doman can maybe answer. Do you anticipate the updates coming back addressing the issue on independent counsel when necessary?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Matlow, the current ordinance that defines the role of the inspector general indicates that unless outside counsel is otherwise authorized by the city commission, that the city auditor and eventually the city inspector general can request the city attorney to retain outside counsel where there is a conflict of interest. So it is already addressed in the ordinance. I think Mr. Payne's point was that it's unclear because it still refers to the city auditor, so I do believe we will, I know we will correct that when we bring that information back.
Excellent.
I'll move acceptance of the contract.
It's been properly moved. Staff recommendation by Commissioner Matlow. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes five zero unanimously. Okay. We are on item number 10.01, Municipal Code Board Appointment. Mr. Treasurer Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This item requests, as its title suggests, appointment of an individual to the municipal code board specifically to, the option recommended is to appoint David Malito to a partial term which would begin upon approval and conclude in June at the, I'm sorry, through May 31st at the end of a vacant term, but then to also approve beginning June 1st, 2025, a full term which would take him through May 31st of 2028. So appoint David Malito to a partial and first full term to the municipal code enforcement board.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Toman, you're listed as a reference on this application. Do you provide a reference for this individual?
Yes. David Malito was a law clerk in our office, and he did an excellent job for us.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We are on the introduction of ordinance 11.01. Let me go to Madam Attorney for the actual introduction of the ordinance, and then I'm going to come to Mr. Sutton for an introduction of the item. Then we'll get into public comment if we have any, and then discussion, and we'll go from there. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-oh-40, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida repealing the Citizens Police Review Board Division Four, Sections 2-2.253 through 2-258 in Article Six of Chapter Two in the Code of General Ordinances, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. The recommended action is Option One, introduce ordinance number 24-oh-40 and set the first and only public hearing for January 15, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Okay. So to be clear, the recommended action is simply to introduce what you just did and approve the ordinance that will come back to us on January 15th that would repeal ordinance number 20-oh-31, which is Citizen Police Review Board. Correct?
24 dash, yes, yes.
Excellent. All right. Mr. Sutton?
Thank you. I just want to provide a little bit of background as to the reasons that this ordinance is being repealed. This ordinance is being repealed to bring the city's code of ordinances in compliance with state law. Earlier this summer, or earlier this spring, I apologize, House Bill 601 was passed by the Florida Legislature and was signed by the governor in April. The law is intended to bring uniformity across the entire state on Citizen Police Review Boards. Just as a little bit of background, in the summer of 2020, our city commission passed the ordinance that created the Citizen Police Review Board, and it was given authority and structure that was in accordance with the laws that were in place at that time. And our board specifically was modeled after that that was in place in the city of Tampa. And that's important, and I'll come back to that in just a minute. During the legislative session earlier this year, the city attorney and I closely monitored the bills in both the Senate and the House as they moved through, and we provided updates to you as necessary, and to the point where in March, you as the city commission passed a resolution opposing those bills moving forward. But they did, and ultimately, the legislation was passed, as I indicated. And when, I'm aware that there is some, there is some discussion out there as to the applicability of the new law to police review boards across the state. And when you look at intent, when you look at the meaning of the law and how it should be implemented, you look at the intent of the legislature, and we looked at that very closely, and it is clear to both the city attorney and myself that this bill and law does apply to our city, and we will have to repeal it. As part of the agenda item, I have included the staff analysis from the state legislature that clearly says the intent is to bring uniformity across the entire state and some police review boards. And the law does provide for how those boards should be implemented if local jurisdictions do wish to have them in place. Specifically to that point, getting back to the city of Tampa, they were looking at repealing their board earlier this year, and House Representative Danny Alvarez of Hillsborough County came before the Tampa City Council. And essentially, and I want to paraphrase rather than quote him directly, is that he advised them that if they find some kind of language in the law that they believe would allow them to continue with their board as it existed, that it would force him to come back to the legislature in 2025 and close whatever provision they believe allows their board to continue to operate. So he then went on to advise them that the intent of the law is clear, that the legislature wants uniformity in how these boards operate, and that if the city wants a board to continue, they should do it in accordance with the state law. And then just to go a little bit further, just last week, the city of Tampa did repeal their ordinance creating their police review board, so it is no longer active. And then one last issue or item I did want to point out is that in the city of Miami, they had a police review board. They pulled all staff support and funding for their board. The board sued the city. It went to court, and the courts ruled that the law did preempt the city of Miami's police review board and that the city of Miami acted appropriately in pulling support for that board. That is the background and kind of the impetus to why we are bringing this forward at this time.
Okay. Any questions before we get into public comment from Mr. Sutton? For the general public, the reason why Mr. Sutton was providing information along with the attorney is that it was Mr. Sutton's office that staffed the police review board. Okay. Any questions, colleagues? Sounds great. Okay. Let's get into public comment. How many speakers do we have on the side?
Mayor, I have two speakers on the item.
Okay.
The first is Stanley Sims, and then Delilah Pierre.
You name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. I want to thank the inspector for really giving us the background on this. Let me say this. Am I for a citizen review board to look upon questionable police actions with citizens? Yes, I am. But what I'm not for is the new structure that the legislators have added to the citizen board. And so with this new structure, with everyone on this board has to have the consent or the approval of the police chief, that's just right there is dead for me. That kills home rule. That takes away your authority as a city commissioner to appoint someone to this board that can be on this board unless someone who you supervise, you city commissioners who supervise a police chief, has more authority than you. He has to agree. That's what makes this, in my opinion, not a true transparent citizen review board. And I'm afraid that if we allow this board to continue, moments just like this, that how we explain how this board works, the framework, the ramifications, its limitations, what it can and cannot do will be lost. Because when something happens in our community, something maybe not as big as a George Floyd ever, our citizens are going to think that the citizen review board has their voice, and it doesn't. It has the voice of the police chief. It doesn't have our voice. Our voice have not had a free right to just go in and apply ourselves. We have to be screened. And I just think that that takes away from the muscle of this task force, and I just ask that it go away so it will no longer be a distraction to our community.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Delilah Pierre.
You name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name's Delilah. My address is exempt. And I'm going to start by reading a statement from Howard Simon, the interim executive director of the ACLU. He says, "By signing House Bill 601, Governor DeSantis has undermined much of the hard work that so many communities across Florida have engaged in to increase trust between residents and local law enforcement. The legislation does not dissolve civilian review boards; it simply narrows their authority. For example, nothing in the legislation signed today prevents citizens from reviewing public records, including the record of a police investigation, and review boards are still able to review police department policies and procedures, including use of deadly force by the police, procedures for ensuring public safety and protection of First Amendment rights at mass events, including use of surveillance techniques and other policies, and make recommendations to the department chief for the reform of these policies and procedures. It is extremely disappointing to see our city try to introduce a notice to repeal the citizens' police review board, especially since I, who have attended the majority of the citizens' police review boards, was told by leaders who work in the citizens' police review board that House Bill 601 would not stop the board from being repealed. After House Bill 601 was passed, the city commission passed a resolution to support civilian review boards against DeSantis's policy. But the moment that it doesn't benefit you particularly, the moment that eyes are turned away from what's happening, our city is abandoning the public by choosing to repeal our citizens' police review board, on the heels, of course, of our city's treatment of Calvin Riley, a black man who was given a DUI conviction even though there's proof that Kirsten Oliver, a police officer, planted evidence on him. Is that accountability? The citizens' police review board has never been perfect, and since it's existed, Mayor John Daley, pro tem Mayor Dine Williams Cox, and Critic Richardson have done whatever they can to limit its power and weaken it. That is extremely unfortunate. But the truth is, it's one of the only external mechanisms for accountability for policing in our city. Tony McDade, Michael Johnson, Wilbon Woodard, their names are still in the hearts of the people. These people were murdered by the Tallahassee Police Department, and the officers responsible for their murder have not been held accountable. I find that behavior to be deplorable and despicable, and I am disappointed to see our city commission abandon police accountability. The police cannot be the only ones to investigate themselves, and I laugh when Lawrence Revel says things like, "The police do a pretty good job of investigating themselves," because guess what? The community and the public don't think that. So I ask that if you are going to introduce this repeal, at the very least, have more than one public hearing. Give the public a real chance to come out and show their feelings and thoughts about police accountability in our city. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
That was the final speaker, Mayor.
All right. Colleagues, the item before us is to simply read it into the record. There will be a public hearing on January 15th where we will hear from the public and make a final decision. So open it up for discussion. Commissioner Williams Cox, mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for option number one.
Second.
Option number one's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support the introduction today because I do think this needs to have a public hearing and a final decision. I do. I'll reserve most of my opinions for that public hearing, but I do think we need to look at the implications of the word oversight generally and how that's good for public policy. You know, having extra eyes on something is always, leads to better public outcomes. And I think when we look at the intent of this law and how it affects us and the review of publicly available information, and then to have a group of individuals give an opinion based on publicly available information, I think government trying to limit that type of speech is scary. So I think, you know, I believe that there's some implications with our board as it currently stands and what's been preempted by state law, but I do think we need to have a conversation of, you know, what platform does the public have to wage an opinion on different incidents? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Porter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree that this is a conversation we need to have, and I support having a public hearing, but it would be frankly my preference that we have had this item come to us or this conversation come to us before the introduction of ordinance because there is a robust discussion to be had. There are potentially alternative options. This is something that I know is important to this community and that is important to the commission, which is why the CRPB was established in the first place. So I'm not comfortable moving forward today because I only learned about this coming to us for an introduction for a public hearing a week ago. I think the community needs more time before we jump to that point, even though I understand why we are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. There's a motion on the table made by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Matlow, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Porter, would you support scheduling the public hearing for a later date, February or March to give more time?
If that is an option, I would support that.
Would there be any issue with changing the...
Is there a motion?
Just, sorry, I'm asking staff, would there be an issue with changing the date today?
I don't think there would be if we announce it at this meeting that it's going to be on, in the February date, which I don't know off the top of my head. And actually, it hasn't been noticed for the public hearing yet. It wouldn't be noticed until after this date, today's date.
I'm just, to the motion maker, would there be any issue with changing the date to February?
Say that one more time. I'm sorry.
Changing the public hearing date to a date in February rather than the January 15th?
A motion, a substitute motion on the table that was made by Commissioner Matlow to change the public hearing date to February's meeting instead of the January 15th meeting. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Porter. I understand the intent, and I think that's great. I'm ready to go ahead and vote. I'm ready to go ahead and repeal it, and I'm ready to do it at the January meeting. So I'm going to respectfully not support the substitute motion. I'm just ready to move forward, and I'm ready to repeal the board. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first of all, want to make it clear that this commission supported a citizen police review board. That's why it was established in the first place. And if I recall, it was a unanimous vote to establish that board. It operated according to commission policies and practices, but what we have here now is a legislature, a Florida legislature that establishes state law that has said we can no longer, and we also, we went a step further. We also passed a resolution that was sent to the governor indicating that as a commission and a community, we were against repealing the citizen review board. Apparently, that had no influence on the legislature at the time nor on the governor because he signed this into law. Mr. Sutton has indicated that in two instances now, one in Miami where it was even litigated in the courts, and the courts found that it had to be repealed. The Tampa City Commission that refused to repeal their citizen police review board after this bill was passed, they took that action. And so I don't know what else it would do for us to extend the time that we repeal our board, because that's all we would be doing is extending the time for what we know would have to happen. I think if there are issues concerning the continuance of a citizen police review board, those need to be taken to now our state legislative delegation and to the governor's office to see if, in fact, there is interest now in language that would allow municipalities to then reestablish a citizen... then reestablish a citizen police review board. But at this point, I see no reason for us to extend the time when we officially take action to repeal our local board.
Okay, on the substitute motion made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter, which was to extend the time period before the public hearing from the January meeting to the February meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails, two to three, with Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioner Richardson in dissent. We are back on the original motion, which is simply to read into the record the introduction of the ordinance and to host a public hearing at the January meeting. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Commissioner Porter, I'm sorry, was that a yea or a nay?
A nay.
Okay. And so the motion passes four to one with Commissioner Porter in opposition. Okay, we are on policy formation and direction, item number 12.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask Robert Wigan, our Director of Resource Management, to come forward. This time of the year is when we do our budget closeout. As we know, our fiscal year runs October 1st through September 30th. Then we spend the following weeks making sure everything is balanced and the entries are appropriate, and we come to this point. Very good news to share, Robert, or shared in his presentation. All of the funds are balanced, we've closed them out properly. All in all, what I would consider a good year is a challenging year. We know we had many storms, very expensive events, but we were able to weather that financially, and we come to this point of closing last year's budget out. In addition, we'll ask you to authorize us to make the final accounting entries and establish the necessary agreements with FEMA to seek reimbursement for expenses related to Hurricanes Debbie, Helene, and the tornadoes in May. So with that, I'll turn it over to Robert for the presentation.
Robert, great to see you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, City Commissioners, appointed officials, and members of the public. The budget process calls at the end of the year for us to approve the fiscal year '24 budgetary closeout. That fiscal year '24 budgetary closeout includes priorities that were met for public safety, affordable housing, and infrastructure enhancement. As you can see, our operating budget totaled $868 million, of which $201.4 million was the general fund. The general fund is our most constrained fund, but with that, within that general fund, and as you well know, we were able to invest over $8 million to address affordable housing, investing $7.8 million in proactive public safety initiatives. And then we've continued to invest $3.9 million in proven CHSP success. It all set the stage for the fiscal year '25 budget, which you adopted in September. As the City Manager mentioned, the closing entries that we're recommending balance the 14 operating funds and continue to invest in those community assets. I would like to take a moment just to credit the strategic plan, your leadership, department directors and their staff who continuously monitor and manage expenses to ensure a balanced budget at the beginning and end of each fiscal year. Looks like I've got the remote up here. As part of the adoption of the budget closeout, there are also some budget amendments that we are recommending in order to recognize income that's been received for home investment partnership program and the state housing initiatives partnership programs, both of which do loans, down payment loans, and also construction and rehabilitation of affordable housing. So we're taking that opportunity to ensure that we're spending those dollars down in this fiscal year. The budget in fiscal year '25 utilized budget saving measures for the key capital improvement programs. And then since 2020, we've been awarded $300 million in grant dollars, exceeding the revenue from property taxes in that timeframe, again escalating the amount of impact we're able to have with the general fund. In fiscal year '24, we've got an end-of-the-year calendar deadline that requires us to have it fully expended, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars that we received beginning in 2021. You directed us to prioritize public health response, economic recovery, and revenue loss recovery. We've successfully been able to expend that money and either encumber it so then in the next fiscal year, we can finish expending that money. The funds allowed for $18 million in direct investment in affordable housing, homelessness, community services, neighborhood resilience, food insecurity, and entrepreneurial support. Following the approval of this closeout item, the entirety of the city's ARPA funds will be expended or encumbered consistent with the program requirements directed to us by the U.S. Department of the Treasury. With approval of the fiscal year '24 budget closeout, I'm proud to say that we've been able to increase the balance of the deficiencies fund by nearly 16% over fiscal year '23. Again, great credit to the city's departments, efficiencies, effectiveness, good management of their funds. As you are aware, the deficiency funds provides for those unforeseen emergencies, and it allows us to react and respond during natural disasters, allowed us to react and respond through the pandemic, and then through an economic recession in even earlier times. In that, in the most recent pandemic, it allowed us to operate without sacrificing our high level of service and by maintaining our staffing levels in the city. As mentioned by the City Manager, we're also asking with the adoption of the budgetary closeout that you approve the public assistance subgrant agreements for Hurricane Debbie, Hurricane Helene, and the May 10th tornadoes. Again, a significant, important way to access dollars that enable us to react and respond in a constrained general fund. I'm happy to answer any media questions, and after public comments, we'll ask you to take the recommended action that was described by the City Manager to accept the budget closeout report as presented, authorize all fiscal year '24 year-end adjustments as presented, and approve the public assistance agreement for the three events that we experienced in this last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or clarification for Robert before we go to public comment? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. You all, again, do outstanding work. I think I saw in the news that the county talked about what they'd spent for storm recovery. Do we have a ballpark of what the city of Tallahassee did with these storm recoveries?
Absolutely, Commissioner. Great question. Our current number that we're working with, and it's a number that's in flux as we collect the background information to substantiate the cost, there's a lot of documentation involved. But we're at about $4.5.4 million. And you might think that quite a bit of that is the electric restoration, and an impactful amount is also from community beautification and recovery of debris. And then all of the departments such as customer operations, parks and recreation, our water sewer departments reacting and responding and restoring traffic communications. And so I could go on, but a short answer is $5.4 million.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Banjer.
And Commissioner, you asked generally about the storms, and Robert, he understood the question because we know what was discussed publicly was Hurricane Helene, $5.4 million. I'll note that each storm, you know, takes on its own shape and form, and the tornadoes were devastating to our community. We know they didn't impact as widely as a hurricane does, but that expenditure approached $50 million. And so you take Hurricane Helene that just scraped the eastern boundary of Leon County. I think we had 60-plus thousand customers out at the peak, and we spent $5.4 million on that through a bunch of efforts because all the things that we do to put our community back together, not limited to electric. But in the case of the tornadoes, it was, and Robert will correct me, my memory was it was approaching $50 million. So the exposure is significant, and we've been able to meet those challenges.
Yes. Thank you, City Manager.
Great. Any other questions, clarification? Good public comment. How many speakers do we have on this item? Mr. Cook?
There are no speakers on the item.
Okay. Commission discussion.
New staff recommendation, option number one.
Option number one's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? I see none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Commissioner Porter, you still with us?
Yes, I voted aye in support.
Okay. Excellent. Passes unanimously, five to zero. Item number 12.03, the fluoridation of public water system. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this has become a discussion nationally at the state level about the fluoridation of the use of fluoride in our public water system. And of course, we provide water services to 80,000 or 85,000 households and businesses in our community. And it's been a longstanding practice directed by the City Commission to add fluoride at the recommendation of public health experts. I wanted to take the opportunity while this discussion is happening, because it's not one that we talk about often. It's been a standard practice, ongoing. We do it every day. Our community benefits from it. And I wanted to take the opportunity just to share with you a little background of what we do, how long we've been doing it, a history of things. We're simply asking you to accept the status report, but of course, if you want to provide additional direction at this time, we're certainly open to that direction. With that, I'd like Alyssa Myers to walk us through a little background and presentation.
Alyssa, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So at the request in January 1987, at the request of the Leon County Health Department, the commission unanimously approved fluoridation of our public water supply to provide a public health benefit for our community. According to medical experts, fluoridation at optimal levels reduces cavities by 25% and saves families money, reducing the number of missed days of work and school due to dental pain. The Centers for Disease Control named fluoridation of drinking water one of 10 great public health interventions of the 20th century because of the dramatic decline of cavities since the community water fluoridation began in 1945 in Grand Rapids, Michigan. So fluoride is a mineral that's naturally present in our water at about 0.2 milligrams per liter. We add fluoride to our system to reach optimal levels, which is considered at an average of about 0.7 milligrams per liter. If you're trying to visualize that, that's about three drops in a 55-gallon barrel. We sample our water daily to make sure that we're providing the right amount of water of fluoride in our water. And we provide that information to the public annually in our water quality report. The average we maintain is 0.7. It shows you that we have a lowest level, I think, of 0.35 milligrams per liter, and our water quality report shows up to 0.85. We had, you know, one sample that was at that level. So nearly 73% of Americans on public water systems drink fluoridated water. The Centers for Disease Control, World Health Organization, American Medical Association, American Dental Association, American Academy of Pediatrics, American Water Works Association, and I'm sure there's more, all continue to support public fluoridation of the water supply at optimal levels for the public health benefit. Now, in contrast to the wide-ranging scientific support of fluoridation of the water, in August of 2024, the United States National Toxicology Program published a monograph finding that there was a linkage between fluoride in drinking water and lower IQs in children. And this was when they were provided with water that was fluoridated at a level of 1.5 milligrams per liter or more, which is double the optimal level. So this study followed a citizen group petition against EPA under TOSCA in the federal court in Northern California. And in September 2024, the citizen group prevailed, and the court ruled that fluoride posed an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children. The court did not make a conclusion with certainty that there was injury to the public health, but that there was enough risk that fluoride should be regulated by EPA. To date, there has not been any regulatory action. It's not clear what that will be in the future. And then last month, the state of Florida Surgeon General issued guidance recommending against community water fluoridation. So this recent federal court ruling and the Surgeon General guidance has not changed the recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatrics or the American Dental Association, among others, to continue to optimally fluoridate the public water system. The decision whether to fluoridate the water system, it's a local policy issue. It's not mandated or prohibited by the state or federal government. It's a local issue. So I ask today that you accept the update, and we will continue to monitor this emerging issue and any changes in regulation.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions, clarification, before we go to public comment? No? Okay. How many speakers do we have on this item?
Have two speakers on the item.
All right.
Our speaker is Joanne Hart. Joanne Hart, followed by Russell Walter.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Joanne Hart, 5469 Cato Drive. Good afternoon, Mayor Daley and Mayor Pro Tem, Williams-Cox and City Commissioners. My name is Joanne Hart, and I'm the Chief Legislative Officer for the Florida Dental Association. Our association represents more than 8,000 members around the state, and our goal is to help Floridians improve their oral health and their resulting overall health. I want to start my remarks by thanking the city of Tallahassee for your efforts in supporting community water fluoridation since 1987. This small act has provided a great deal of protection for the citizens of Tallahassee from dental disease. We know that there is so much more that needs to be done, but this has been a great constant for the city. Unfortunately, recent news around fluoridation has led to a lot of misinformation being used as facts, such as fluoride is lowering the IQ of children. I would say that since the city of Tallahassee has been fluoridating its water since 1987, I think we can all agree that this statement is false because we have some intelligent people born right here and raised in Tallahassee who have been consuming the city's water. To clarify some of the misinformation in the news, there was a federal court ruling that directed the EPA to further evaluate the levels of the U.S. drinking water supply, as was mentioned. The judge did not rule that the local government should stop fluoridating the water systems, but that's what's being portrayed by those that are against fluoridation. Another report that specifically said that higher levels of fluoride, which was levels of 1.5 parts per million or higher, doubled the recommendation that a level of 0.7 parts per million were linked to lower IQ in children. I provided for you some information that I hope will be helpful on you getting the facts on fluoride. And I'm sure you've seen the support from other credible, trusted groups such as the American Dental Association, the American Medical Association, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, that has a whole campaign dedicated to dental health on their website called Campaign on Dental for Dental Health, where they have a lot of information available in support of community water fluoridation. And just as it was mentioned, the federal government nor the state government has the authority to mandate or stop fluoridation. It is a local decision, and so we definitely want to just continue to advocate for that support that you are already providing for the citizens of Tallahassee. Again, thank you for your continued support of water fluoridation, and know that the Florida Dental Association is always available to the city of Tallahassee as a resource. Our office is right down the street. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Russell Walter.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Russell Walter, 3939 Old Mill Run. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Russell Walter. I'm a board-certified oral and maxillofacial surgeon here in Tallahassee. Been in practice for nine years. I'm also a past president of Florida Society of Oral and Maxillofacial Surgeons as well. I am not an expert in water science. I'm glad that Ms. Myers is able to rattle off all the specific facts in terms of concentrations, but I am an expert in managing dental disease and tooth-related infections. I know that there's significant concerns that arise from the fact that fluoride at high levels can create health issues. That's true of all things in life, all things in moderation, I think is a very fair statement, particularly true whenever it comes to our health. You get examples, vitamin D in milk, you could have hyponatremia from too much water consumption. So I think this debate really does fall within the realm of that discussion. We've got tremendous barriers to dental care in our community. We service about a million individuals, just shy of that, and that's between, I count five or six pediatric dentists and five oral and maxillofacial surgeons. It is the most underserved part of the state of Florida and arguably one of the most underserved areas east of the Mississippi River. On a weekly basis, my partner and I treat patients, particularly young children. On a weekly basis, my partner and I treat patients, particularly young children, elderly, and immunocompromised individuals, in the operating room dealing with the extent of untreated dental decay that forms abscesses, and spend a considerable time putting patients to sleep and putting neck drains in to get these issues resolved. They have discontinued fluoride in certain communities, and I've done studies to see what happens as the ramifications of that. The most vulnerable members of our community will bear the brunt of this increased disease burden, and it's not just only creating a cavity, it's the pain and suffering and health complications that come with it, which is where this concern comes from. So with that being said, I think eliminating a well-established public health measure, one that's long-term proven to eliminate and significantly reduce disease based on really unproven evidence at this point would be a grave mistake and very short-sighted. I urge you, as this discussion comes up more in the future, to carefully consider the city of Tallahassee's role in the management of fluoridation in light of the overwhelming evidence that supports this. So thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That was our last speaker on this item.
Okay, that was a great status update, certainly do appreciate Alyssa, professionals from the field here in Tallahassee. The motion is simply to accept the update of what we're doing in our water.
So moved.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Twelve point oh four. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, it's my honor to introduce this next item. Staff, we're seeking the City Commission's approval to name the clubhouse at Halem and Golf Course in the honor of Jan Auger. All of us know Jan, but I would like to share with us and those that are listening a little about her. Jan spent thirty-seven years working with the city of Tallahassee, and her career was filled with accomplishments and successes, and her legacy reaches far. Jan started her career in nineteen eighty-six as a golf cart attendant. A couple of years later, she moved to supervisor of golf course operations, so she was a fast riser, apparently, while simultaneously working as a professional golf instructor. Jan is an LPGA pro. In two thousand nine, she became the general manager of golf. I think we all know, the city operates two golf courses, Halem and Jake Gaither. And through this, through the game of golf, Jan found that she can make a lasting difference in people's lives, not just on the golf course. These lives included young golfers she guided and mentored, many who she inspired to move forward and succeed personally and professionally. A great example is Kamau Johnson, who is a professional golfer, he plays on the PGA Tour. He's a local kid turned PGA professional, probably in the most unconventional of ways. According to Kamau, Jan's simple act of kindness saved his life, and he's been very successful, and he's doing great, and he's making us proud. Jan is a major contributor to the partnership with First Team, an organization that empowers kids and teens through the game of golf. That partnership continues today. And something that many may not know, Jan had a great impact on the many individuals that have been part of the Department of Corrections Second Chance Program. That program has touched many, many lives. Jan herself has interacted and worked with more than five hundred individuals in that program, seventy-five of which now work in various city departments and serve the city of Tallahassee today, and many, many more that have had very successful outcomes. Jan's commitment to mentorship, encouragement, and selflessness have positively impacted so many lives. Jan's passion for golf and people, I underscore people, also have led to longstanding impactful relationships, such as Halem and's own golfing seniors, they like to call themselves the Hogs. I might have picked a different name, I'm not sure. As well as our Halem and Women's Golf Association, the bond with Jan and individuals of these is strong. And I think as we, many of us may also know, the Oasis Center for Women honored Jan with the Oasis Trailblazer Award, an award honoring pioneering women who opened doors for others. Jan's imprint will last forever. Jan retired not long ago, she's enjoying herself, doing what she wants to do every day. But Mayor and City Commissioners, we believe it's only fitting that we name the clubhouse at Halem, where Jan worked for so many years, changing lives after Jan Auger. We ask for your approval on this, if approved, we will work toward that renaming and have the ceremony at a later date.
This is a great idea. What public comment do we have on this item, Mr. Cook?
No comment.
Okay, I will make the motion for staff recommendation.
I will second it.
Seconded by the Mayor Pro Temp. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, this is wonderful, this is a great idea. Jan is a treasure in our community that literally has taken golf and our public facilities to the next level, and what a great way to celebrate her and her retirement. Great idea. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We are on item number twelve point oh five. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask John Baker to come forward, John's going to make a presentation on this one. This is seeking the Commission's approval of the final allocation of funding for the implementation of the Griffin Heights Neighborhood First Plan. The City Commission previously approved six point four million to be appropriated over three years for the plan. This item seeks your approval of the final two point one five million. John Baker, as well as Ashley Edwards and many others, have worked directly with the neighborhood, their representatives, to bring this about, and I'd like John to share with us where we are.
Mr. Baker, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present to you the final allocation for the Griffin Heights Neighborhood First Plan implementation. As the manager said, in twenty twenty-one, you adopted the Griffin Heights Neighborhood First Plan. It was the third of three neighborhood plans that you have adopted so far. Griffin Heights, in large parts, is outside of the CRA. So this was funded by the City Commission. You allocated six point four million dollars for the implementation of that plan. To date, you have allocated a little over four million dollars for the plan, so remaining to be allocated is two point one five million dollars. And critical to the allocation and all the previous allocation that we have done is community engagement, hearing from the community. And over the years in Bond, in Frenchtown, we have used an exercise that is called Balance the Checkbook. And the intent here is to give individual people in their own privacy, in their own space, an opportunity to say how the money that you have allocated to their community should be implemented. And in June, we hosted that exercise in Griffin Heights, actually at Date Street Community Center. We had over forty-something residents and stakeholders in attendance. They were given a checkbook to fill out, and the confines of that exercise was that they had to use that money to fund an action item that was in the plan. We collected that data, and the neighborhood association had asked to be a part of that exercise as we put the data together, and so we had, I think, I had two or three of them who sat with us, went through every checkbook to make certain that we were properly documenting the numbers and what people wanted to spend their money on. We subsequently went back to the community on August first, and here we presented to them the findings from that exercise with a recommended budget. And we, the community was asked to weigh in on that recommended budget, and again, they provided a worksheet to us, and we used that to finalize the budget. This item was scheduled to come to you a few weeks before, but then we heard that there were concerns in the community. Our deputy city manager, along with staff, went out and had a further meeting with the community that was held on November twentieth, and the recommendations that we are presenting to you today is sort of compilation of what we have heard over these three meetings, plus talking with neighborhood resident. And I should mention that there are several members from the Griffin Heights community here. On screen, you'll see a compilation of the data that was received from the checkbook exercise. And as we put together funding budget for them, we look at what most people said that they wanted funding to be spent on. A lot of detail more went into this, but from this came four projects, which we are recommending today that you approve this allocation. One point two six million dollars to go to neighborhood infrastructure and land use, and I know that doesn't say specifically what the project is, but the community desired to do some streetscape work on Alabama Street, they'd like to see that look like Saxon Street in the Bond community to a certain extent. And working with U UPI, we presented to the community several different options for that work. One point two six million dollars represent the totality of the budget for the option that they selected. Crime, prevention, and neighborhood safety, as you know, continues to be a big concern for the community. And so seventy thousand was set aside to help with programs there, perhaps, you know, after-school program, working with TPD, working with the community to decide what those programs will be. Seven hundred and forty thousand for housing rehab. To date, I think we have funded close to over forty homes, and so they'd like to see more. In Frenchtown, we have funded close to a hundred, in Bond, right at a hundred, so this would take them up into seventy homes being funded. Eighty thousand allocated to thirteen oh nine Alabama Street, which is the healthy food store that you had previously allocated funding to construct. This eighty thousand here is a recognition that what we're doing there is only building the shell of the building, and whoever is selected as a successful vendor perhaps going to need a lot of help to finish the inside of the building. So this would be in the form of a grant for fixed improvements to the interior of the building, and this totaled two point one five million dollars, and that's the recommendation we offer today. I believe that this has the support of members of the community, and we believe that this represent what we have heard from the community. And available for any questions.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any questions, clarification before we get to public comment? So what you are presenting to us is coming straight from the neighborhoods, and they're in agreement?
Not in totality, but the majority of the folks from our reading, this is what we have heard from them.
Okay, let's get the public comment. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor.
How many speakers do we have?
Half dozen, at six at this time.
Say again?
Six, I said a half dozen.
Okay.
The first is Rodney Lander, and then Dwayne Harvey.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please, you have three minutes.
I am Rodney Lander, six seven four West Fourth Avenue, Tallahassee. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, you've seen me here before. My major effort before has been with the thirteen oh nine Alabama Street. However, today, there's an issue coming before you with regard to a funding proposition by the Miracle Hill Nursing Home. And I would like to comment on that, and I'll get back to some compliments I have for you. Miracle Hill Nursing Home has been around, I think, about fifty-two years. I live in that area, it has provided a lot of good help for people over a long period of time. And to that end, when they came to us about a year and a half ago and asked for some funding to help do whatever they do, we thought about it, and we recognized that they are a for-profit organization, which we don't give, and the City Commission doesn't give money to for-profit organizations. However, Miracle Hill, being the place that it has served in Tallahassee for a long time, we got together and we thought about it, and we asked them three questions. One, what does he ask? Two, who's going to be the steward of the money? And three, when will you give us reporting requirements of what you did with it, if you get it? Subsequent to those questions, we awarded them the money, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Out of our budget, which is not allocated by you, but out of the goodness of our hearts and thoughtfulness of the community, we agreed to give them a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. None of the three points that I've just made to you were adhered to or responded to. There's now a move afoot to get a considerable sum more than that by the Miracle Hill cadre. I'm here to tell you that I have with me, and the president of the Griffin Heights Neighborhood Association, and as the community action team chairman, I am recommended that we don't fund them at any level at all, because we need the money that you gave us. And we came before this commission, before any, not one of our projects was funded and brought to bear. We came to you and asked you for money for them, and you did so. I think that's laudable. However, we don't have that kind of money to give out, and we have a plan to go forward with the first plan that was presented to you and adopted by you, we plan to do that. And as you said, Mayor, get the money out of the door. I was here the night when this whole thing was adopted, you took to your right and told the manager to get it on. Mr. Manager, you called Ms.
You have about thirty seconds.
You called Ms. Barbara up here, and you handed it to her, she's done a laudable job. We don't recommend any money at this point in time for Miracle Hill. I will be back to you probably in about the next one and a half months to present to you three show-ready projects we are ready to go and have the commission approval. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dwayne Harvey, and then Chris Bernie.
Name and address for the record, please, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Dr. Dwayne Harvey. I live at thirty-two forty-six Hemingway Boulevard in Southwood Community, but I also am a stakeholder in Griffin Heights, owning over ten acres of property in Griffin Heights, and I am the CEO of Miracle Hill Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. What I want to talk to you about quickly is process. And you heard a lot about the community being involved and the community having support. The community is strictly divided. We talked about a checkbook process that was supposed to be fair to all, but some of the numbers I saw today, I didn't see previously to walking into this building, and those were the total numbers. If you look at the checkbook process from the staff that was presented, you will find that the neighborhood association, they had an average spending for neighborhood infrastructure of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-five. After they averaged all the checkbooks for neighborhood infrastructure, that was what the number was, six hundred seventy-eight thousand, one twenty-five. In second place, after you averaged the numbers from what the community said, housing and rehab was second, averaging five hundred and five thousand, four thirty-five. Those numbers were present in the presentation. And in third place, averaging based on what the community said, was Miracle Hill, with an average donation of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. What we were told was that all of our positions would be heard. What I experienced as a doctor of healthcare, I experienced something totally different when it came to the process. I experienced coercion. I experienced bullying. I experienced people trying to hush or silence me, all because I had a difference of opinion. When I said, let's bring in all these people, I know people who live in the neighborhood, let's bring them and have a support, forty people is less than one percent of the six thousand citizens that are in Griffin Heights, less than one percent. And only three or four people are speaking in these meetings. On Monday, our meeting was thirteen individuals. How can you get a true representation with thirteen individuals? Miracle Hill has provided a wonderful resource to the community, served many of the people sitting in here, their relatives, their families, their friends, in a service, bringing end-of-life care or bringing rehab care where they go home. Miracle Hill deserves this, deserves to have a piece of the pie, and what I'm asking you to do is make sure that every individual voice is being heard. Today, please do not vote this through, but take time to make sure the process was done accurately, and it hears everybody's voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Chris Bernie is next, and then Karen Henry.
Name and address for the record, please. Reverend, oh, good seeing you.
Good evening. Twenty-three forty-four Lake Bradford Road. I serve as the president, Miracle Hill Board. I'm a little concerned, and I just want to, even though we perhaps may be left out of the process, I want to bring before you what the process, I want to bring before you what Miracle Hill means to Tallahassee. It is one of the last standalone facilities that served the underserved, elderly, the needy. Most of the nursing homes now are private and corporate. We're the only one out of the other facility in Jacksonville. We serve, we try not to turn anyone away. Many of our residents, we are now serving 120 residents at Miracle Hill. We also have, and many of our employees are here tonight, we have 130 employees that we are providing food for their homes, their children. Yes, we have people in our community, it's not just primitive Baptists, but we serve all denominations. And right now, our community at Miracle Hill is a family. And Miracle Hill just don't serve African Americans. We have a diverse population at Miracle Hill that needs somewhere to lay their head at night, that their families would not have to be displaced and travel all the way to Perry, Florida, which many of our hospitals, because of the insurance process, will have had families that have been told that they might have to go to Lake City or Live Oak. I'm asking this commission to please, if this is not a means wherewith you can help us, please don't allow Miracle Hill to suffer. When we represent you, we represent many people in this facility that are standing in here tonight, sitting in here, we've served the community. We house the community, we're employing our citizens. Please keep us in mind, and we solicit your prayers and your support. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Karen Henry is next, she'll be followed by Donna Harvey.
Yes, my name is Karen Henry. My address is 2856 Guffwind Drive. I am an employee for Miracle Hill. Actually, I handle most of their marketing activities and the admissions that are out in the community and that we accept. When we did the checkbook exercise, I think what I'm not hearing, and it really distresses me this part, was that when the checkbook exercise was done, and Dr. Harvey submitted what we did, it wasn't just Miracle Hill that was benefiting. It would involve everybody getting a piece of that pie. I think that this, this whole process, I've been a part of this group for about two years now, and I can honestly say this has just torn the group apart. There are so many different opinions about this, and I'm hearing too much about Miracle Hill actually wanting to take the whole pot, or this being about Miracle Hill. It's not. If you look at that checkbook exercise, look at what we submitted, you will see that we were looking at various groups. Everybody would have received something, not just four from the list. This is a community that is very diverse. There are lots of people in that community, and there are lots of issues and concerns. But allowing the money to only go to four particular groups, I don't think that that is going to be best interest for the group. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Donna Harvey is next, and then Jesse Dozier.
Name and address for the record, please.
Donna Harvey, 0 O Bangford Road, Tallahassee, Florida. I stand before you right now, and thank you for this opportunity, just to express my heartfelt thoughts about the checkbook process. I participated in it, and just like some of the others, it was my understanding that more than four organizations or four people would be a part of partaking in the funds that were available. So I just ask you to look into that, because when I come to the table and I feel like I have a voice, I expect to be heard. I don't expect to come and see the end process be something that I was not expecting, or something that you told me was going to happen. I try to take people at their word and take people at adhering to the process that was presented to me. So I ask that you just look at the process a little bit different. I don't really appreciate how Miracle Hill is being, as they say, bullied in this process, because that facility has been in the community for years, and it does not, it does not deserve to be eliminated from this process. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Jesse Dozier, and then our last speaker that I have will be Stanley Sims.
Good afternoon, Jesse Dozier, 818 Volusia Street. As a stakeholder in the Griffin Heights community, it is my understanding that throughout the years, the community has been overridden with a few key factors, such as drugs, poverty, homelessness, et cetera, that pretty much tried to bury the rich history of the community. I believe that the Griffin Heights Community Association and the Griffin Heights community is not forgotten. Being that every month, the association, which are led by a group of people representing a community who love and care for our community, are brainstorming to make it a great and safe place to stay. But within the Griffin Heights community, one of the things that I'm not hearing is Miracle Hill Nursing and Rehabilitation Center, which is a part of the Griffin Heights community. Many people all over Tallahassee have allowed their loved ones throughout the years to be entrusted into the care of Miracle Hill Nursing Center. Each time that I have visited Miracle Hill, I am met by a group of people who love and care for their residents, who diligently work to ensure patient quality care, and who employs many people from the Griffin Heights neighborhood. Beautifying the neighborhood is nice, but in my opinion, that's not solving anything. What people are in desperate need of is opportunities. Because of many opportunities through employment from Miracle Hill Nursing, the volunteers, the inspiration of the professionals that work day in and day out at the facility, the community can continually become greater. Please consider helping out Miracle Hill Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Stanley Sims is next.
Name and address, you have three minutes.
Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way. The Apostle Paul said these words. John, I seek to do good, but evil is always present. Now, let me quantify that. I know John, I know Ashley, no Reverend Barney, no Harvey, oh, a lot of Miracle Hill And I believe, Mr. Mayor, we all came together seeking to do good. Me and John disagree on a lot of things, and Ashley may not see good on every point. But one thing I think that I know I can say about Ashley, and I can say about John, the heart is good, the intent is good. The outcome did not come to what we want, but there is not one person in this chamber cannot say that Miracle Hill is not worthy of being acknowledged in this first plan. It's an icon. I don't want to spend my three minutes justifying why they should be funded. I want to spend my time on working on resolutions that we can get to that sweet spot. Because I think that nobody in here is saying that Miracle Hill is not deserving of the money. And I also believe that we can say that there can be a solution, and we don't even have to cut the baby in half. This is not hard. Ooh, I hate to say this, but it's on my, if we was on the north end side of town, and it was Bradley sausage store, sausages, that I, and I don't want to demand this man's business. This man has put his business year after year, have overcome some circumstances-
Your 30 seconds.
And have survived, just like Miracle Hill. And that needs to be respected. And all Griffin Heights is saying to you, Mayor, give them some respect.
Mayor, we have had a couple of additional speaker cards. One is DeShanika Wright, put down item 1301, but this item is Griffin Heights, and that was the description. So I assume the speaker wants to speak on this item.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is DeShanika Wright, 3700 Capital Circle Southeast. My name is DeShanika Wright, and I am an employee at Miracle Hill. I work alongside with Dr. Harvey, who is the administrator, and the various directors who carry on the day-to-day operations of Miracle Hill. Miracle Hill has been a pillar in the community since 1968, and what I've seen since I've been there, I've seen nothing but advocacy for the residents that live there. I've also seen a unity within the organization. We have took a devoted vow and said that we are here to serve and make sure the residents get back to their maximum health and wholeness. And in that time, we made sure we did just that. We often strategized on how we want the organization to be better. We've also placed ourselves in position for when outside community partners need assistance, we are also there for them. When it came to the previous hurricane, when there was going to be a direct impact, we opened our doors at Miracle Hill to make sure that other residents in Crawfordsville would be placed, and we want to make sure that we were there for the community. There's no way that you could talk about Griffin Heights and not acknowledge Miracle Hill. So all that we are asking is during this process, please, pretty, pretty please, make sure that you consider Miracle Hill because it's in the heart of Griffin Heights. We employ Griffin Heights residents, and we also create job opportunities for those residents, and we serve their residents day in and day out. So to not be considered, I believe is a disservice. So I'll please say again, we try our hardest to create jobs and opportunities for those so crime can be reduced within those communities. I serve Griffin Heights every day and wouldn't have it another way, so please, 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 consider Miracle Hill when it comes to allocation funds. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is LaShantia Hill, I believe it's Hill. And Mayor, this is the last speaker that I have a card for at this time.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
1030 Harlem Street. I am Griffin Heights co-chair. We're in a difficult position right now. I want to say thank you for giving Griffin Heights the money that you have already, but we have so much work that is needed in Griffin Heights. As you can hear tonight, I'm here to represent Griffin Heights. What we have on the four items is needed. I'm all for compromise with Miracle Hill, but we're so far behind in Griffin Heights. One of the poorest zip codes in the state of Florida. I'm in healthcare. I'm not saying don't support them, but we need all the help we can in Griffin Heights, as you can hear tonight. I just wanted to say that as Griffin Heights co-chair, we have our issues, but tonight we need to move forward. We can't keep going backwards. We need to continue to move forward, whatever that looks like tonight, I'm here to move forward. And so that's my last thing.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Have no further speakers, Mayor.
All right. Colleagues, direction, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, put Tim.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out to speak. I want to thank everyone who has participated in this process, and I know that this is a process that has been used in other neighborhoods, and our staff has been there to steer it, and I know that Deputy City Manager Barbara has also been engaged, and so have I. But I must say this, that I am all for moving forward, but I must say this, I was disappointed not to see Miracle Hill included in this. Being an anchor in the Griffin Heights community, being an employer, being an economic driver, being the place where many of our ancestors and historic figures have met their end of life, knowing some people who were there, who are not able to pay to be there, but they're there. They're there, they're not putting them out. They don't have anywhere else to go. And if their family can't get them into Miracle Hill, they can't, certainly can't get them to Perry, they can't get them to Live Oak, they can't get them to other places. And if we somehow, when I say we, this community does not support Miracle Hill, there will be those who will come in and take it over, and it will change. It will change from what it looks like now. If you're not able to pay, you won't be able to go. Is that what we really want? Is that what we really want? I understand, we want, if money was not an issue, but it's always an issue, and we always have competing priorities. But we have to have a way to sustain businesses, as well as homes and streetscape and those kinds of things in our communities. And fortunately, there has been some funding identified, because we, the city, from the city budget, this is not CRA, this is not in a CRA, so these are not CRA dollars. This is, this is from the city budget that this money occurred. I would hope that the residents of Griffin Heights, let's figure out a way to support. I see folks in the audience shaking their head, but hopefully, but for the grace of God, there go we, that you won't need a place to go to spend your last days. But we know some folks did. Dr. Foster from Florida A and M, Dr. Moses Miles. All of these are, these are community star wars who had to come to these, to this place. And who knows? Who knows? We are, we are working on some other solutions. You know, I know Mr. Bowers and Pastor Bernie met, and we're looking at what can happen economically. But in the meantime, and between time, we cannot let this institution just flounder. Yes, there have been some challenges, but they're coming through them. They're coming through them. And in the words of Dionne, you just got to believe. We got to believe that we can make this happen. And so my heart of hearts would be that we would figure out, I'm not saying we need to go back to the drawing boards, I know this has been an arduous task, and I know that there have been some great conversations, but I'm just hoping that, in our heart of hearts, we'll try to figure out how to support those who can't support themselves, and those individuals who are residents at Miracle Hill. Because someone will come in and take it over, and then it won't look like it looks now, and it won't be what it is now. You will have to pay to play. Thank you.
Is that a, for the action for tonight, is that a motion for option number one?
Let me go back and look at option number one. Well, in the, in the final allocation, Miracle Hill is not in there.
That's not, is there, are you providing any direction?
I'm not. I'm just, I'm just talking right now.
Okay. I will make a motion for option number one to approve the final allocation of funding for this.
I would second that, Mr. Mayor.
And there's a second on the table. I- I understand the significance of Miracle Hill, and I understand the position that Miracle Hill is in. I want to get away from the discussion of this pot versus that pot. We need to be creative in our approach. The neighborhood first money is the neighborhood first money. I appreciate the citizens that have volunteered their time for the past several years. Griffin Heights is very important to us. That is the reason why it is the only neighborhood in the city of Tallahassee that has their own neighborhood first program in the city of Tallahassee budget. There is nobody else, only Griffin Heights. We have two others in the CRA. This is the only one here in the city of Tallahassee budget. Yes, Doctor, you mentioned that, how do you come together to make these decisions, 43 people? Well, the Citizens Group was a representation of the community that's been working for years. You're not going to have the entire neighborhood come together. Nonetheless, we need to keep moving forward. I am not familiar with the request. I have had some conversations with my dear friend, Elder Bernie, who I look forward to continuing the conversation with. I have never seen an application sent to the mayor's office. I have no idea what the request is. I have no idea what the allocation would be used for. I'm a little caught off guard, and so I need to have the conversation, and I would encourage us to get together, sir, so we can sit down and talk. I would love to come visit and get a tour and meet the facility and staff. But for the purposes of this evening, I'm ready to move, get the money out on the streets with the neighborhood and continue the conversation. That's why I made the motion for option number one. Mayor Protim, and then, let me go to Commissioner Richardson first. Commissioner Matlow, if he has comments, I'll come back to you. Let's give everybody.
Yeah, and I'll be very brief, Mr. Mayor. I have followed this, you know, since the time that we allocated the funds to the Griffin Heights community. I was at the very last meeting. I thought that Deputy Commissioner, Deputy City Manager Barber did an excellent job of making it clear what the recommendation of the city was. And I, I thought we all left there, at least I left there, with the understanding that these would be the recommendations that would come before the city. I have a long history with Miracle Hill Nursing Home. Reverend Miles was a fraternity brother of mine, and all during the time that we participated in that organization, we supported Miracle Hill. I have personally supported Miracle Hill over the years. But, but it was my understanding that this neighborhood first money was for the neighborhood and improving the conditions in the neighborhood, not for, for businesses or a business in the neighborhood. I'm not sure what the appropriation would be used for if it was granted. I have not heard that. I know that Miracle Hill did get 125,000. I don't know how that was used, or, I know that Miracle Hill has had some financial problems over the years, but they are a church-supported organization, y'all. I want to put that on the table. They are, in fact, a church-supported organization. And maybe that is a discussion that needs to be had about what can the church do to make those funds available to this church-supported organization. And so it was my understanding from that last meeting that, that the four projects that are being brought before us this afternoon, they were the top four. But when you looked at what it would cost to accomplish those four projects, or those projects, those were the four that could be funded out of the, what is it, 2.2 million? Those were the only four that could be funded out of that appropriation. So that's what has come before us today. It, you know, it, we, it came to us at the last meeting. There were some issues. It was taken back to the neighborhood. And like I said, I left that meeting at Dade Street with the understanding that everyone understood how this money was going to be appropriated and what the recommendation was going to be when it came back to us tonight. I hope that we can continue to work with Miracle Hill in obtaining the funding that they need for whatever the needs are at their institution, because of course, we all understand the importance of Miracle Hill and the neighborhood and what it provides. I don't know that anybody questions that. But the neighborhood first dollars, in my estimation, are for neighborhood improvements, and that's these four projects that we have been recommended. And so that's why I would support the motion that's on the floor.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start by saying I recognize the need. I think it, it breaks my heart every time we have a conversation about $2 million that's being divided up by a neighborhood in a very small bucket, and we don't have conversations about $135 million police facility. We don't have conversations about, you know, $20, $25 million senior centers for Walone, but we ask our existing neighborhood to bear the brunt of not getting the investment from our, our tax dollars. The neighborhood first program, I think, is great, but I think what we've seen in every neighborhood that participated in it so far, we're not allocating enough money to realize the difference that we want to see in these neighborhoods. I know that's a bigger conversation than this item. It's a budget conversation in the next budget year, but I think we need to understand what the outcomes we're looking for are in budget appropriately, because we keep landing into this position where we're asking folks, is Miracle Hill worth more than your sidewalk, or is it worth more than a grocery store in your neighborhood? And that's not fair to anybody. It's not fair to pit neighbors against neighbors, because I think everybody who spoke, who participated in the process, wants what's best for Griffin Heights. I'm not sure, I mean, I've seen the spreadsheets and the allocation amounts, but I do want to have a separate conversation, Commissioner Williams-Cox, about just the need for accessible nursing home and end-of-life care facilities in our community and the public benefit for that. You know, when my father went into hospice, we couldn't get him into a facility in Tallahassee. We had to drive to Madison. So I know what people are experiencing in our community, and we're not seeing a whole lot of local community people standing up to fill that void. So it is a need in our community that should be discussed. And the neighborhood, it could go. I understand people's issues with the process. I think some of those concerns are valid, but at the end of the day, there's not a perfect process when there's not enough money for all the different needs that are on the table. There's always the choice of, you give everybody a little bit, but you don't fulfill one vision, or, you know, how do you make it fair? And there's no, there's never going to be fair when you get through that process. So I can support Mayor Daley, the motion, but I don't, I'm also interested in seeing something else come forward with our staff to look at the broader issue of nursing home facilities in our community, making sure we're not going to lose any of the existing ones we had, and what funding sources there are in our community, whether that is economic development. I know we're not talking CRA for this one, but just what the possibilities are to work together with the neighborhoods in good faith to find a solution for this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me pause. Commissioner Porter, would you like to weigh in?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with, with the comments that have been shared, and I'm ready to vote.
Coming back to you, Mayor Protim.
Let me just say this, that I am going to support the motion that's on the floor. I don't want it to come down to where we got to choose either or.
I agree.
So I am going to support that. But I am encouraging us as a community to figure out how we can help Miracle Hill. I'm not interested in looking at the broad spectrum of nursing homes. They haven't come to us with the need. I'm interested in trying to preserve Miracle Hill. Why? Because Miracle Hill is predominantly black. Miracle Hill is predominantly low-income. Miracle Hill is, may not be the choice for those who have proper insurance or proper whatever, but they're, they're where people go when they don't have and can't afford. So we've, we've got, we're looking out for babies, we're looking out for the people in the middle, we got to look out for the elderly. So I just wanted to say that I am not trying to put one over the other, but what I am seeing is that we've got to figure, figure this out. Miracle Hill is doing some things to try to make this happen, but it should not be theirs alone to make, to try to make this happen, because the community benefits. They're hiring people. People are being paid. People are taking their paychecks and spending it in this community. Folks are bringing their loved ones there. I know of a staffer here who went and took his mom from another facility and brought her to Miracle Hill because of the care that is being given, that's being given to our folks there. So I just wanted to be clear, I am not trying to pit one against the other, but I would be disingenuous if I did not say that, I have, there's a special place in my heart for Miracle Hill, and I'm willing to do whatever we need to do to try to help figure out how to make this, this funding happen, to keep Miracle Hill open. So if there's somebody out there that's listening that can help us find some grants or find some other ways to, a capital campaign or whatever, to help keep Miracle Hill moving in the right direction, then let's do that, because I'm not interested in someone coming into our community from somewhere, Tennessee, Minnesota, wherever, coming in here, turning Miracle Hill into something we don't recognize, because then that impacts our neighborhood as well. So that's where I stand. I will support the motion that is on the floor.
I have made a motion on the table for option number one, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment before we take a vote? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to go into recess until the public hearing. By advice of the attorney, we're going to actually come back at about 6:05, not 6 o'clock. We will be back at 6:05, not 6 o'clock. Make sure that everybody was here. We have one agenda item. It's the bond hearing in regards to the hospital with no public comment that I think that we can take care of relatively expeditiously. I did not want to start without anybody, and we do have Commissioner Porter on line. I'm going to ask, before we begin the public hearing real quickly, if the clerk would introduce the bond issue.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare is entering into a financing agreement for certain computer and other equipment needed for the delivery of healthcare services. In order to obtain a tax-exempt interest rate on the financing, the financing will be issued in a conduit format through the city in a similar fashion to prior financings. No revenues of the city are pledged, and the city is not responsible in the event of any payment default. With that description, the recommended action is to approve Resolution 24-R54, approving a plan of finance on behalf of Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare, Inc., and Bank of America Public Capital Corp. for the financing of certain equipment to be used by Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare, Inc.
Okay. And again, for the record, we have no public comment on this item.
No public comment.
Okay. And for the record, there is no exposure or liability on behalf of the city of Tallahassee.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Move for option one.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Protim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Okay, let's go to the public hearing, and then we will come back to 12:07 and 12:08 after the public hearing. So we are on item number 16.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 16.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-0-39, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending, amending sections 14-4.302 and 14-4.402 of the Code of General Ordinances relating to firefighters' pension provisions, providing for a conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-0-39.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues.
Some will.
Second.
Properly moved by the Mayor Protim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 16.02. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 16.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-Z-29, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee amending the North Hampton planned unit development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, located on 259 acres on the east side of Thomasville Road, along Cary Forest Parkway, and the north side of Veldedary Road on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended option, action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-Z-29. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Okay. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding, so Madam Attorney, walk us through the proceeding, how this is going to operate.
Actually, I think it's just, we're going to have a presentation by staff about the ordinance, and then it will just be standard procedure for the speakers, the way we typically do them, three minutes per speaker. I think the treasurer clerk has them lined up and maybe even has.
Okay. Because this is a quasi-judicial, let me announce for the record that I've had three separate conversations, one with a resident, I mean, excuse me, a member of Faith Lutheran Church, a resident of Foxcroft, and, well, that'd be Kim Barnhill, Faith Lutheran Church, Melissa Strauss, a resident of Foxcroft, and Lee Schneider, who is the vice president of one of the homeowners associations. And I will make sure that that is properly loaded into the system. Any other declarations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've had two conversations with, with Mr. Schneider, as you mentioned. I had one conversation with him and another conversation with homeowner association president Danielle Macbeth. I'm sorry. Danielle Macbeth.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor.
We'll just go down the line.
Okay. I had one meeting with Lee Schneider and Jane Edrith, and I've gotten several emails which we forwarded to the.
Sure.
Treasurer clerk. But those were the only in-person meetings that I recall.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you. I had one in-person meeting with the St. Ives Neighborhood Association. The same as information that was submitted to the portal in the packet.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter, any declarations for the quasi-judicial proceeding?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had one in-person meeting with members of the St. Ives Neighborhood Association, and any other correspondence has been uploaded to the portal, although I believe that I may have received some emails since this meeting has begun.
Okay.
That would need to be uploaded.
For the general public, when we have quasi-judicial, it is important to have full transparency. And so state law requires us to declare on the record, but also declare in writing through the system, the conversations that we have taken place. It's actually discouraged to have conversations, however, they do happen. And in this case, the conversations took place with members of the public and the residents, and so that's why we had to go through that process. If you have sent us emails, and if you have sent us documents, just know that that is also part of the record, and we make sure it's all included as well.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm the only one who hasn't had an in-person meeting. What? 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 Nobody wanted to meet with me?
So, Madam Attorney, before we have the presentation, also a point of clarification. What is the, the action before the commission today?
To conduct this public hearing and adopt the, the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance. Obviously, the alternative would be to not adopt the ordinance, but the action is to hold the public hearing.
Okay. All righty. Mr. White.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The item before you tonight is a rezoning that would amend the North Hampton Plan Unit Development, or PUD, or PUD. If I say PUD or PUD for the general audience, I mean Plan Unit Development. The existing North Hampton PUD is approximately 260 acres. It kind of takes up the area that you see on the map. The proposed amendment to this PUD really addresses only about 10.7 acres of that 260-acre PUD. The area that is. The area that is addressed by this proposed PUD amendment is the area shown on the map, but it's the, the portion that fronts Thomasville Road between Velda Dairy Road and Cary Forest Road. The proposed amendment would create a, a change in the allowable use of that property, moving from low density residential to commercial uses. The way it's framed in the proposed PUD amendment would be creating the Velda Square Shops district. That is kind of really the, the crux of what the proposed amendment is. It would have some accompanying text and map changes that go along with that. And I should note, and I'll kind of reiterate a little bit later, that the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission both recommended unanimously to find that this kind of meets all the criteria that I'll talk about in a moment, and then recommend to the city commission that you all adopt the proposed ordinance. One of the maps that is updated in the proposed PUD amendment is the, the PUD concept map. This is the general land use map. And you can see kind of on here where the proposed Velda Dairy, Velda Square Shops is. That would create that kind of your commercial node. The maximum intensity of non-residential development at that location is 20,000 gross square feet per acre. And that is consistent with and implements the urban pedestrian centered development pattern that is outlined in the comprehensive plan, this policy 1.7.7. Basically, the Bradfordville mixed use land use category, which is one of the many land use categories that we have on our future land use map, has several development patterns that implement that land use category. The urban pedestrian center is one of those. And this is consistent with what the comprehensive plan says about that specific development pattern. Along with the new, the new district, the, the Velda Square Shops, comes updated development standards. That includes landscaping and buffering. And specifically, this graphic from the, the proposed PUD amendment shows that there would be a 20-foot landscaped buffer between the, the Velda Square Shops and Thomasville Road. And would also have a 30-foot type D buffer, which I'll say is the most, the widest and most densely vegetated buffer in our land development code between the commercial, any new commercial development and the existing residential areas. When we receive an application for a new PUD or a PUD amendment, our land development code gives us very specific criteria that we are supposed to use to evaluate these PUDs and PUD amendments. They're on the screen, these four points. And kind of going through them, the first one is, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? The Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission both determined that with the conditions that are included in the agenda materials, that the proposed PUD amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Specifically, and just kind of in summary, specifically it implements that urban pedestrian centered development pattern, which is one of the implementing districts for the Bradfordville mixed use land use category. So yes, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The second criteria is, is it consistent with other ordinances? Generally, we're talking about, is it consistent with the land development code? And the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission both determined that yes, the proposed PUD amendment is consistent with the land development code. Is it consistent with the purpose and intent of a PUD district? The answer to that was also yes. The Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission determined that it is consistent with the purpose and intent of the PUD district. Basically, that's looking at, does this meet the minimum size requirement? Does it meet the mixture of uses required? Does it meet all the, the standards that a PUD has to address? And the answer to that was yes. And then finally, school considerations. Because this does not increase the number of residential units. It'll be kind of a commercial node. There is no impact to schools projected. Of course, you know, site plan comes in and they would have to kind of reevaluate that at that time as well to ensure that there's consistency in capacity in available in the schools, should there be an increase in residential density. But that was not kind of one of the points that this PUD really has any impact on. And so kind of based on these criteria, the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission both recommend, recommended, and they both did so unanimously, to recommend approval of the proposed PUD amendment with the conditions that are outlined in the, the agenda materials. In terms of public notice, we sent over 1,000 notices, 1,058 mailed notices to everyone who resides within 1,000 feet of the, the proposed PUD amendment, as well as to 14 different homeowners or neighborhood associations. We received a couple of inquiries for copies of the PUD, the proposed PUD amendment, and responded to those. We also received concerns about traffic, light, noise pollution, noise impacts, proposed, or concerns about property right, property rights, property values being impacted, as well as impacts to conservation area. And we have addressed all of those. They're in the agenda materials. But in summary, kind of when we're looking at compatibility, that 30-foot type D buffer, again, that's the kind of widest and most densely planted buffer that we have in our code to buffer the existing residential areas from new commercial development. Then the PUD also talks about, should the church change into a different use, rerouting the traffic so it would not go through the St. Ives neighborhood. It would come from Thomasville Road and the commercial uses adjacent to it. And then just kind of for the record, there is no conservation easement in this area. And so there would be no impacts to a conservation easement from the proposed PUD. Again, kind of based on those criterias that we evaluate this against and kind of looking at consistency with the comp plan, consistency with the land development code, and those other considerations, the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission both recommend unanimously to approve the PUD amendment within stated conditions. And therefore, our recommended action is option number one, which would adopt the PUD amendment.
Okay. I got a couple clarification questions before we get to public comment. And I'll open it up to anybody else. One of the, the great, the two great sticking points that I'm hearing right now is about a canopy road protection zone and the conservation easement as well. And I would love for you to expand on that because you just said there's no conservation easement and everybody behind you is shaking their heads, yes, there is. And Dr. Jumaville, I know that you also provided some information, Commissioner Porter, that was shared with us as well. So if you would like to provide additional comment, because this seems to be two very controversial points.
Yes, I can address both of those. The, the first one being the canopy protection zone. Thomasville Road is not, nor has it ever been, a designated canopy road. You know, we have a number of canopy roads that are designated as such in our land development code. We're looking at Mikasuki Road and Centerville Road and several others that have designation as a canopy road. Thomasville Road is not one of those and never has been. The existing PUD self-titled their buffer between the development and Thomasville Road as a canopy protection zone. That is not the same as the canopy road overlay that would go along with a designated canopy road is what they called their landscape buffer. And so the way that was established in the current PUD is that from the center line of Thomasville Road, it would be 150 feet from that center line of, of that road is what the current PUD designated, kind of considered itself a canopy protection zone. I will note that since the time this PUD was adopted in the late 80s, Thomasville Road was widened from a two-lane road to a six-lane arterial highway. So much of that area that was within that 150 feet is now additional lanes of traffic. And what this PUD amendment proposes to do is instead of relying on an area that would be from the center line of a road that no longer is located where it previously was and has more lanes than it previously did, it would put a 20-foot vegetated buffer along Thomasville Road. So you would retain kind of that visual aesthetic of having, you know, trees between Thomasville Road and any future development. And that is consistent with kind of other PUDs and other developments in the area. We've used that 20-foot standard. So this would match the 20-foot standard while kind of keeping that visual aesthetic and the kind of tree line there. But it's not a canopy protection, it's not a canopy road overlay because Thomasville Road, again, is not, nor was it ever designated a canopy road. The second point is
Hold on, let me stop right there, Kai. And, and to note what you just said, yes, the canopy protection is extremely important. But in my understanding you and your position is, or staff's position is, that there's no legal protections in place as, as according to the comprehensive plan, the land development code. It is simply just the name of this geographic area right now? Or are there legal protections? And did the planning commission and the DRC agree or disagree with that position of, of the city and the planning department?
Right. There's no protections from the comprehensive plan or land development code that would apply to designated canopy roads. Basically, it would be just, as development occurs, consistent with the PUD that's adopted, we would hold that space there and hold them to what is in the PUD today. The PUD amendment would kind of refine that and say that instead of it being a canopy protection zone, 150 feet from, kind of however we would measure it based on Thomasville Road existing before it does today, we would have a 20-foot landscape buffer. And so it would be easier for staff to kind of look at and understand and be able to implement, easier for the general public to know kind of where the buffer would be, again, because it'd be 20 feet from the development kind of towards Thomasville Road, not 150 feet from a road that has changed. And then it's something that as the development comes in, they would know what the standard is and be able to implement that as well.
In 2013, before any of us were elected, there was action that was taken with this PUD. I think the neighborhood has provided some documentation. At that time, when the city commission, I guess, accepted amendments to the PUD back then, there was language that was put in place, reemphasizing the importance of canopy road protections. Can you speak to that?
Yeah. As development and property has been subdivided kind of over time in that case specifically, we've evaluated against the, the PUD that exists and noted that the PUD calls for that area. And so we would implement it as the PUD calls for. Should the PUD be amended, we'll do the same thing, but with a 20-foot wide buffer, landscape buffer between Thomasville Road and the new development. We will always make sure that whatever comes in is consistent with the zoning or the PUD in place at the time that the application comes in.
Does the DRC and the planning commission agree with that position as well?
Yes, they recommended approval of this.
Were there any sticking points at the DRC or the planning commission outside of these two issues as well? What else? What were the major conversations around, Artie?
Mostly just the conditions that are outlined in here, and those are more technical in nature. So the PUD amendment calls for a 20-foot landscape buffer. Like there was a condition that says, yes, that is a type C buffer. So clarify, that is a type C buffer versus just calling it a 20-foot buffer. So kind of nothing that really would address this beyond just kind of clarifying what type buffer that is.
Finally, tell me about the conservation easement that is in place.
Yes. So there, quite frankly, is not, nor was there ever a conservation easement in this area. There was a survey that was done kind of a while back that mislabeled the drainage easement as a conservation easement. But an easement is a legal document creating a specific kind of thing with specific protections and agreements and all of that. And there is no actual easement that exists for a conservation easement. There is a drainage easement. There are access easements. But there is no conservation easement in this area.
When would this Scribner error take place? How long ago was it?
I believe it was in the late 90s, but I'm not completely sure. I'd have to go back and talk to staff about kind of when that was. But the applicant also did a title search and that title search revealed that there's no conservation easement as well.
So there's no, okay, okay. Madam Attorney, any comment on that particular item? None of us are.
I agree. I, I agree with staff on that.
Thank, thank you. I know that there's been big issues and we'll have conversations about. Anybody else have clarifying legal, yeah, Commissioner Matt La?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, I'll save other comments after the speakers. But just for clarification, when the canopy protection zone was set up for this PUD, Thomasville Road didn't have a canopy road designation?
That's correct. It has never had a canopy road designation.
Okay. So it didn't have a designation, but they still implemented a protection zone based on whatever the rules were at that time?
That's what they kind of self-declared to be their buffer. So they, they had buffers along Thomasville Road. And in the PUD, they called their buffers canopy protection zone. When we have a designated canopy road, we would actually like kind of declare it for the entire corridor, not just for one kind of development along the corridor. But the canopy protection zone, as they called in the PUD, is just their landscape buffer and only applies to their development, not, not the Thomasville Road corridor itself beyond the specific development.
And do you know the current width of Thomasville Road with six lanes?
Not exactly. Typically, travel lanes for DOT arterial are 11 to 12 feet. So probably in the 120, 140 foot range would be a ballpark estimate. But I don't have the specific measurement. I mean.
Yeah, that would be my guess as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's go to the public, Commissioner Porter, any questions, clarification, before we go to public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we have 25 to 30 speakers at this time. Public hearing is the same as our city commission meeting earlier. Each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. I'll give you a heads up at two and a half minutes. In addition, there's a light in front of the mayor that starts off green. It'll turn yellow when you get to that 30-second mark and then red when your time has expired. With that, our first speaker is Erin Tilton, followed by Roger Nguyen.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Erin Tilton with Sterns Weaver Miller. It's 106 East College Avenue, Suite 700. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Hold on, may I stop you real quick?
Yes.
How many applicants do we have, by the way? One or two?
Mr. Mayor, I think Artie's the best answer then.
Artie? I'm sorry, Ms. Tilton. I apologize.
This application had two applicants, one being the church, one being the property owner.
Okay.
And as Ms. Tilton begins, let me also ask speakers, if you will, make sure that you adjust that microphone to your level so that your voice can be heard. We are making sure this is recorded, as all of our meetings are. We also have some sign language being performed. And those persons need to be able to hear everything that's said. Thank you.
Ms. Tilton, are you representing the church or the property owner?
And to clarify, I'm here on behalf of the property owner.
Okay. Thank you. Please, please start again.
Thank you. Commissioners, your staff did a fantastic job with their presentation. I think they've covered pretty much everything that I would have covered as far as what's in this application, what the criteria are for you to, to look at, the history of the property. So they did a fantastic job. I won't retread that ground. But there is one issue that I want to harp on a little bit because I think it merits some further clarification. And, and Mr. Mayor, it's right in line with the questions that you were asking. So in October, our team became aware of some statements being made publicly about the potential that this PUD amendment was designed to approve commercial development in a conservation area. And that sounds really bad, right? It gets people's attention. And so the property owner took that very seriously. I can tell you from our team's standpoint, we went back, we ordered title work for the entire property. And I've personally reviewed those title documents. And I can tell you, the situation with title to this property and with the existence of easements and conservation areas is exactly as your staff just described it. There are no conservation easements on this property. There is a drainage easement, which will appropriately be addressed at permitting. And then there is a self-imposed canopy protection zone, which was designed to protect what was then a two-lane Thomasville Road at the then 1987 center line of Thomasville Road, which has since grown to six lanes. And as your own citizen, canopy road citizen committee has found in their report, which we submitted in some of the documents that we sent to you yesterday, Thomasville Road no longer exhibits the characteristics of a canopy road. That's it. It's really that simple. And at the beginning of, of this, you know, venture in October, at the request of your city attorney's office. office, I reached out to St. Ives HOA's attorney, and I never received a response. And that's very unfortunate.
Everybody's, Ms. Schneider, I need you to work with me, okay?
Then I reached out to someone who held himself out to be an attorney on behalf of the St. Ives HOA at the request of your city attorney. Unfortunately, because we weren't able to engage in that dialogue, this misinformation has been repeated. It's been reported in the news. It's been placed on a petition that's been signed by thousands of people. That does not make it true. Trust your staff, they've done a very thorough job. They've done an excellent analysis of this property. And they've told you, the PUD amendment is consistent with the comp plan, it meets the criteria for approval, it's compatible with the surrounding development, and we ask that you approve it this evening. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Roger Nguyen, followed by Ken Metcalf.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Roger Nguyen, I represent the property owner. My address is 805 North Gadsden Street. And I'm just going to kind of do what Erin did, hit a couple of highlights. Staff did a great job outlining the details of the project. I'm just going to say about traffic, because that's been a topic of conversation and comments, there's no traffic study required for just a simple PUD amendment or zoning change. When a land use is identified on the property and proposed, there will be a traffic study that's done as part of that application. When we're proposing as part of the PUD amendment, two driveway connections to Thomasville Road and one to Velda Dairy Road, we'll have to provide or apply for the proper permits with FDOT at that time, and we'll do traffic studies, turn lane analyses, and that sort of thing, based on the specific land use that is proposed on the property at that time. It's really premature to do a traffic study based on just a zoning change at this time. Stormwater was something that I saw comments about. Again, we'll follow the land development code for all the stormwater requirements. There are two existing stormwater management facilities on the site. Those will remain in place. I saw one comment that said, we propose to fill them. We do not propose to fill those ponds. We propose to leave them in place as they are. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the commissioners or anybody else has. So, thank you.
Our next speaker.
Is Ken Metcalf, then Al Russell.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ken Metcalf, 106 East College Avenue, Suite 700. I've submitted, or our team has submitted my report into the record on behalf of the applicant. My analysis demonstrates consistency with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. I concur with the findings of the staff report, and I'm basically here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Al Russell.
Name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Al Russell, 8114 Holly Registrel, Tallahassee. Thomasville Road, I've been traversing that road for 43 years, up and down, going home, going to work, and it's changed so much. It was a two-lane road, and had to go to a four-lane road because more neighborhoods came into the area, more development came in, which was good, we needed it, and they followed the rules in developing those properties. They followed the rules in the neighborhoods. But the neighborhoods came in, and when they did, you know, they called it canopy road, but there was no canopy road, and it was just Thomasville Road. And the church itself, I went to a couple of meetings with the, with the church and the neighborhoods. We had a point where we advertised twice, not with the city, but just on our own, the church trying to be transparent with what was going on, and said, hey, let's all get together and let's talk about it, tell us what your issues are. We had two meetings, it went well, everything seemed to be working well, and then we get to this point. Through the process with the church going through the process and the owner, there are a lot of rules set up to follow, and they're good rules. City puts them in place, they're strict, you have to follow them, you have to get approvals, and they followed all the rules, they got all the boxes checked like they were supposed to do, and we're here today asking for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. You're here for, on behalf of the church? Okay, the owner.
But I work with the church, too.
Okay. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Mike Faulkner, and then Lee Schneider. Mike Faulkner is our next speaker.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name's Mike Faulkner. I live on, at 3688 Barbary Drive. So I'm in support of this going through. I am a member of the church, and I think that it'll definitely help grow our ministry, something that also financially will help us secure that and spread God's word more. I have been living in Tallahassee since 1972. I keep hearing 80s and stuff, I go back farther. Moved here with my folks in 72. They built a house in Woodgate, which was a brand-new neighborhood den, by the way. It's considered an older one now. Thomasville Road, as we discussed many a time here, we heard, was two lanes. There was nothing between Woodgate and Bradfordville currently, except Klaran Estates. Literally nothing. ITIN wasn't even open yet. My point here is, we can see what it's grown to. How many people have moved into the area? Thousands upon thousands. I lived in Klaran Lakes also. We had a house up there. And people were fighting, I can remember, for that Publix to even open. You know, it's infrastructure, people need that. And so I'm not sure what's going to, going to be built in this area, but it may be things that people need and services and such. You've got Velda Dairy Road cutting through to Oxbottom now. There's going to be a lot of traffic no matter what. That's Thomasville Road, it's six lanes. It's a major thoroughfare. They need businesses to support the public. And so with that being said, I, I hope you will pass it. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please.
Lee Schneider, and then Jean Itzen.
Lee Schneider, I live at 5314 St. Ives Lane. I'm the vice president of the St. Ives Homeowners Association. I live in the neighborhood, had a nice little, you know, feel-good thing that I was going to say, but I think I'm just going to address what your staff told you. I feel like they misspoke quite a bit. We came up with, after, after the last planning meeting, when the vote originally went 3-2, I believe, I'm not sure who the attorney was that stood up and, and let the commissioners know they had to have a specific reason for that. So what we did was we came up with 10, and I think on the other side of that, we've got, you know, another, another ABC of reasons to do it. And it seems that your staff came up and said, in the new PUD, we are going to have all these things, we're going to address everything, and it's going to be consistent with the Bannerman things? That's fine, but what we're talking about is the current PUD. We don't want the new PUD. This is our neighborhood, you know? Talking about, you know, buffer zones, canopy road was brought up, up a bunch. It's never mentioned in our PUD, a road. There's 33 mentions of either a canopy protection, preservation area, or conservation easement or buffer, 33 times in our PUD. That's not addressed in the new PUD. They're not, you know, they're, they're taking from Center Lane 150 to a larger road, which I would think we would get a little bit more since the road's larger, you know? We used to have 150 from a two-lane road, and now, now it's going larger, so they're offering us 30 feet? You know, we've got, between St. Ives and our neighborhood, this, this is going to butt up right against many people's backyards across our lane, front yards. It seems to us that the, the full rezoning of all four-part parcels don't seem necessary if the church is standing, is, is planning on staying on that, that front parcel. Why are they asking to be rezoned? Doesn't really make much sense to us. And as far as the language that, that your staff claimed never, never, never happened, there was, as recently as the spring of '23, when the parcels were, were broken up, the city of Tallahassee explicitly reiterated that the canopy preservation area still exists and is to remain undisturbed. So just last, just last year. So them saying that it's not something, that it's a canopy road, it seems like kind of smoke and mirrors, and I just don't really quite, quite grasp it. So simply because you can and it meets the requirements, we're asking that, you shouldn't. It's right up against our neighborhoods, we don't want it, we've got a petition that has, you know, 1,200 people that signed it. We're asking you to uphold your promise that neighborhoods come first-
You're at three minutes.
-and vote against it.
Lee, real quick, you just made, for the record, Lee and I have known each other for decades. You made the comment just a second ago about 2023, our staff said-
Yeah, so when the, when the parcel was taken from one to four, someone on the, on the city staff, you know, said that the city of Tallahassee explicitly reiterates that the canopy preservation area, which is what it's called in the current PUD, should, it exists, which several people have stood up here and said it doesn't, and that it should remain, you know, undisturbed. So, I mean, we're not, you know, we're all for, we're all for using, if you want to do, put some homes on the site because that's what it is, or build another church, how about it? But we don't want it to be changed. We're happy with the PUD the way it is, and we think it should stay. We're hoping you vote against it. Thank you. Thanks.
Hope you feel better, man. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Jean Itzen, and then Jane Hedrick.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name's Jean Itzen. I live at 5317 St. Ives Lane. I'm the president of the St. Ives Homeowners Association, and I'm here, obviously, to speak in opposition to this amendment. The development is bad for our neighborhoods, but it is also a violation of a decades-old canopy protection area. Now, I have to say that we agree on a couple of things. We agree there was never a canopy road protection, that Thomasville Road was, was never designated as, to our knowledge, was never designated as a canopy road. But at the time the PUD was approved in 1987, they knew Thomasville Road was going to be widened. Minutes from the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners dated in November of 1986, before the PUD was approved, report that a Department of Transportation analysis determined that after Thomasville Road is widened to six lanes, the canopy protection area would continue to protect 100 feet from the eastern curb. They knew that the six-lane highway wasn't a canopy road. The canopy protection area was to preserve the trees in the 100-foot buffer. Every request to amend the PUD since 1987 has documented, respected, and maintained the 100-foot canopy protection area. Now, there are several mentions of a conservation easement throughout the PUD, but we also did a title search, and we'll agree with you, we did not find a conservation easement either. However, it's the same land, it's the same 100-feet buffer that is covered by the canopy protection area. And these aren't opinions, this is all facts that we've pulled from city records. And it's not ancient history, because as you might, as you might be able to see here, in 2023, the planning department sent a correspondent that said, the canopy protection area still exists and must be addressed in any attempt to amend the PUD. The canopy protection area is not mentioned in the current application nor in the staff analysis. Without any discussion or justification, the application offers to create a 20-foot buffer strip along Thomasville Road, broken up by driveways. The fact that a 100-foot canopy protection area buffer has been required and respected for four decades is not acknowledged in the application. We believe that the commission and the public are being misled by this failure to even mention the existence of the canopy protection area for this property. If new standards are being created in the amendment, then the application should say what they are changing.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
If this high-intensity commercial development is approved on land that has been protected since the 1980s, the commission will be acting on an incomplete application and disregarding the requirements that have been in place in the PUD for over 40 years. We ask the commission to do the right thing and maintain the canopy protection area that has existed for four decades. If the buffer is destroyed, it will seriously and permanently alter our neighborhoods. But if you don't want to deny the amendment today, we hope that you would think about deferring the decision until-
Thank you.
-Oxbottom Meadow and the west side of Thomasville and Velda Dairy are complete, so you can tell what this is actually going to do to our area.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Jane Hedrick is next, and then Nick Hall.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Jane Hedrick, I live at 5333 St. Ives Lane. I am a member of the Board of the St. Ives Homeowners Association. The Northampton PUD amendment proposes to rezone four contiguous parcels from residential to commercial, which would allow for a strip development. We strongly oppose the amendment. St. Ives is a small secluded neighborhood of 50 homes located immediately adjacent to the land proposed for rezoning to commercial use along Highway 319. The homes in our neighborhood are single-family residences, 80% are homeowners occupied, and the residents are largely older people or families with children. St. Ives Lane is a narrow road with a single point of entry and exit off Cary Forest Parkway for residents, emergency vehicles, school buses, and service people. It's the kind of neighborhood where kids ride their scooters and bikes, and the residents walk around the lanes with their friends, children, and dogs. We feel safe walking day or night. Our neighborhood has been crime-free for over a decade. We are very interested in preserving our safety and quality of life. Canopy protection area has shielded our neighborhood since it was created. We all purchased our homes relying on the protection of that buffer. We need that protection from the highway even more now that traffic volumes have soared and all of the west side of Thomasville Road is commercial. The March 2024 insight flyer sent out by the city has the headline, "Putting Neighborhoods First." Neighborhood safety and beautification were identified as priorities. Those are our priorities, too. The comp plan states its purpose is to preserve, protect, and enhance the quality of life for all citizens by rejecting land use decisions that can seriously and permanently alter the characteristics of a neighborhood. To uphold its promise in the comprehensive plan, we ask the city to reject the proposal to rezone this property to commercial. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Nick Hall is next, followed by Stephanie Kubiak.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name is Nick Hall. I live at 5335 St. Ives Lane. I live with my family on St. Ives Lane. We oppose the Northampton PUD amendment. The proposal places high-intensity commercial activity literally at the back fences of several neighbors. Others will have these businesses directly in front of their homes. This will do major and irreparable harm to our neighborhood. As a whole, the residents of our neighborhood are not opposed to responsible mixed-use development. We often walk our son to and from school at DeSoto Trail Elementary, and on the way, we stop at the businesses along Cary Forest Parkway. Our neighborhood's website promotes the fact that residents can easily walk from their house to Walmart, Red Elephant, the Dollar Tree, Ology, or even drop an Amazon return at the UPS store. We can walk to the public library to vote and check out books, or to Planet Fitness to work out. The city of Tallahassee did a commendable job planning the mixed-use area near our neighborhood with the perfect balance of residential and village atmosphere commercial space. There are many empty commercial properties nearby. We've submitted a map that marks each of the vacant storefronts on the west side of Highway 319 and along Cary Forest Parkway. The patient's first building on Cary Forest has been vacant for years now. There's an empty commercial lot at Cary Forest and Chertington Park that has been listed for sale for years. The huge Oxbottom Meadows commercial development on the west side of Thomasville Road will add much more commercial space. If so much commercial space remains vacant, why are we building more? Rezoning land so it can be cleared for more commercial space is unnecessary and not wanted by area residents. We've been in contact with residents of every neighborhood in our PUD, and some surrounding neighborhoods just outside our PUD, all agree that this development is unwanted and unneeded. This kind of development, intentionally placed on a major highway with no regard for the area's intended residential use, will continue to urban sprawl while eroding the features that make our neighborhoods desirable. We would like to see the city uphold its commitments to citizens in the comp plan and- to citizens in the comp plan and the Northampton PUD, rather than casting them aside as requested in this application. The comp plan states its purpose to preserve, protect, and enhance the quality of life for all citizens by rejecting land-use decisions that can seriously and permanently alter the character of a neighborhood. To uphold its promise in the comp plan, we ask the city to reject this proposal.
Next speaker, please.
Stephanie Kubiak is next. She'll be followed by David Schubert.
Name and address for the record, please. You have 3 minutes.
Stephanie Kubiak, 5301 St. Ives Lane. I'm the treasurer of the St. Ives Homeowners Association. I've been a homeowner in St. Ives for 11 years. We strongly oppose the rezoning of these three, of these four parcels to commercial. We understand and appreciate the city's responsibility to oversee and approve responsible development. We were happy to see the comp's plan goal to protect residential neighborhood integrity in Policy 2.2.6, "The intensity of all non-residential land uses shall be kept to a minimal to reduce the intrusive impact upon residential land use." The proposed amendment significantly increases commercial intensity immediately adjacent to our neighborhoods, attracting customers from the six-lane Highway 319. This is not small-scale commercial shopping opportunities for area residents that the comp plan states is the intent for the Bradfordville mixed-use area. The PUD amendment seeks to rezone the Faith Lutheran Church parcel to commercial while keeping its current use. If it's not going to, if it's still going to be a church, why does it need to be rezoned commercial? If the church property is rezoned to commercial, the road access from St. Ives Lane to the property should be shut off immediately and a full buffer wall put up in its place to protect the residents in the neighborhood from construction and then highway commercial businesses. None of this is addressed in the PUD amendment. In the long term, if these four parcels are rezoned commercial, the plan would allow for the entire block to be developed as a strip mall, eliminating the canopy protection area that has protected neighborhoods and provided home for wildlife and natural beauty along Thomasville Road. The request to rezone the church property alone should be a red flag and should not be approved. This development will seriously and permanently alter the character of St. Ives and Mitt Hill by destroying the 100-foot canopy protection area that has served as a natural barrier shielding us from Highway 319's noise and light. Replacing it with a 20-foot strip of grass and newly planted trees and shrubs will do nothing to protect and screen our neighborhood. Again, the comp plan states its purpose is to preserve, protect, and enhance the quality of life for all citizens by rejecting land-use decisions that can seriously and permanently alter the character of a neighborhood. To uphold its promise in the comp plan, we ask the city to reject this proposal.
Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, the next speaker is David Schubert, and then Larry Kong.
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
David Schubert, 5338 St. Ives Lane. I'm the secretary of the St. Ives Homeowners Association, so you've now heard from our whole board. We oppose the Northampton PUD amendment. While we value responsibly planned commercial development near our neighborhood, this proposal conflicts with the original intent of our PUD. I walk every day, and I enjoy productive stops at nearby businesses, but this amendment raises serious concerns. When the Northampton PUD was established, the city commission deliberately avoided placing commercial development on Thomasville Road to prevent strip development, excessive traffic from outside the area, and harm to the residential character. They also mandated a 100-foot-wide protective buffer adjacent to Thomasville Road, and ensured the restriction was embedded in the deed when the property was designated for a church. We strongly advocate for keeping this buffer intact. We recognize that it may be hard for you to tell if you're hearing from a vocal minority or a community consensus. That is why we ensured our concerns reflected widespread opposition and not just our proximity to the project before bringing them to you. Our HOA board found widespread agreement among the neighborhoods in our PUD documented in a letter that was signed by officers from the HOA boards in our PUD. Additionally, residents from Bull Run, Foxcroft, and other areas outside our PUD have expressed opposition. To quantify this, we started, we started a change.org petition, now exceeding 1,300 signatures. Tonight's turnout further demonstrates emphatic community concern. We also understand that your decision must be fact-based, not just a response to constituent emotions. Our board has thoroughly reviewed the Northampton PUD document and the comp plan. We have provided a list of inconsistencies between the proposal and the restrictions in these guiding documents. Our efforts are based on facts, not emotions, and we're confident in the objective case for denial. I sent you each a copy of the HOA board letter, the change.org petition, and this list of inconsistencies earlier today. This amendment has connected the residents of northeast Tallahassee around a renewed interest in local issues. Although all 1,300-plus petitioners, petition signers couldn't be here tonight, I have committed to ongoing communication with them, including the outcome of this vote. You are our elected representatives,
you're at 30 seconds.
And we trust you to uphold the PUD, the comprehensive plan, and the wishes of your constituents. Thank you for your service and for maintaining Tallahassee's legacy of responsible development. Please do the right thing and deny this proposal.
Our next speaker, please.
Larry Kong, followed by Gary Graver.
Name and address for the record, please. You have 3 minutes.
Hi, my name is Larry Kong, 5325 St. Ives Lane, and I am neighbors of my friends back here. And I'm going to speak from my heart. I don't have any of those. They have given you all the facts. So nine years ago, by the way, thank you, Janie, for
If you could, make sure you're speaking into the microphone so that
I'm one of the old people that Janie talk about. Moving into this neighborhood nine years ago, ready to retire, which I did last year, working for the state government 35 years, and I was really happy until this happened. And this is going to change a lot of things. And I echo everything that they have, the board members have talked about, which is, we walk the neighborhood. We love our neighbors, and we enjoy the quiet, and also the children playing outside, and then we walk pets, and we do all of that. But this is going to change when we rezone, when you rezone the parcels. And we talk about the buffers and all that, but in reality, you know, those buffer works to a certain extent, including the noise, the lights, and the smell, and traffic. It's, that's all going to change. And so I'm just saying that there's nothing good about this change of zoning. There's nothing good. So I'm very disappointed for this to moving, to move forward, and I'm actually quite upset. And just to remind you, I voted for all of you to I mean, to represent me. I hope you understand. And please, represent me instead of the developer. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Gary Graver is our next speaker, followed by Tom Kanter.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have 3 minutes.
Good evening. My name's Gary Graves. I live in 119 Valley View Court, Monticello, Florida. In 1993, I, along with my mother, my daughter, my wife, founded Faith Lutheran Church. And we grew from the three of us to 17 the next year. And a couple of years ago, last I heard, our numbers were about 225. You know, we've done a lot of growing. And as a congregation who heeds the Matthew 28 Commission by Jesus that said, "Go and make disciples of all nations," we seek to continue to grow and to be a congregation that reaches out to the community. My current role is, is in property and maintenance at the church. And I know the grounds pretty well, and there's a few things that you need to know about them. When they're, when you're talking about the 100-foot canopy easement, that's the old Tallahassee to Thomasville roadbed that's about 20 feet deep right now because of the erosion that occurred to the unimproved road that used to be there. It's very overgrown. There's, I don't know what kind of wildlife in there. It's not a safe area. If anybody fell in there, they would not be able to get out. I can barely get out myself. I've been down there many times. Because the, our property is more narrow at the top in the north end of the property, and there's a 100-foot buffer, we're not able to develop the north end. The only thing we can do up there is park, and we use it for a soccer field during the summer when we have a vacation Bible school, summer soccer camp. The biggest threat there is when the soccer balls go down in the ditch, and we have to keep the kids out of there, we have to go chase the balls ourselves. We want to keep the balls out of the roads, too. So we have, we put up a fence to try to do that. If we were to try to develop our property to accommodate other church functions, and we've discussed preschool before, we would have to build south of the existing structure, which would be down in the tree area, that I know the residents enjoy. You know, the big mature trees, the nice woods there, that they don't have to maintain. We often get a lot of trash that's dumped in that area. We have, you know, I see things that people throw over the fence into our property. We have to maintain that. By allowing this zoning to go through, we're, zoning change, we're going to be able to, to build as we see fit. We'll be able to use our property
You have 30 seconds.
And I ask that you approve the zoning change. Thank you all so much. Have a Merry Christmas.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Tom Kanter, and then he'll be followed by George Colius.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have 3 minutes.
Tom Kanter, 4007 Chairs Cross Road, Tallahassee. And I'm a member, longtime member of Faith Lutheran Church. Want to encourage you all to do the right thing and approve this matter that's before you today. A few of my reasons are that, obviously, the POD amendment is consistent with the comp plan. Staff has approved it, or has recommended approval. Requested change in zoning is going to allow the church to develop the property more effectively. Unused spaces currently undevelopable would enable future construction of a sanctuary building on the north end of the property at the corner of Thomasville Road and Cary Forest Parkway, increase visibility, and obviously increase the opportunity for ministry to the community. All the rules and requirements of this, through this process have been followed, and I think we boil down to property rights. And I believe it's the right of the owner to be approved for this. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
George Colius, and then Candy Unglob Albin.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have 3 minutes.
My name is George Colius Jr. I reside at 12080 Turkey Roost Road in Tallahassee. I moved to Tallahassee when I was younger in 1973. That's 51 years. I've seen a lot of growth. When we moved to Tallahassee, my parents moved to Kalarn, and there were so many people that tried to discourage them from moving there, saying it was in the country. It was too far out. Growth's going to happen. Hence, that's why you even have growth management, so you can manage the growth and do the proper, put in the proper roads when they're needed from two-lane Thomasville Road to six-lane. When I came to Tallahassee, I graduated from Lincoln High School, the first new school in years. Since then, you now have Charles. That's how much growth's gone out that way. A lot of what I wanted to speak about has already been touched on, but I'm just going to go over a few of them, and just a few of the facts. One, it's fact that there's no canopy roads. Two, it's fact that by changing this PUD, it's not going to change any more traffic, no more or no less, to St. Ives. Fact, there is going to be a 30-foot buffer between St. Ives and, I'm hearing four parcels right now. I know of only the two where we had subdivided. I don't, I know what a developer has talked about. I don't know if he's broke it up into an additional parcels or not. But there's two parcels at present. We're talking about selling the south side. There's fact, when Velvet Dairy realigns with Oxbottom, that's going to take a lot of traffic off from Cary Forest, in my opinion. Because right now, Velvet Dairy people are coming in and then having to go out, exit through Cary Forest. Well, now they'll be able to exit from Velvet Dairy. I just hope that the commission does the right thing. We spent a lot of time and a lot of resources asking, or giving everything to growth management that was needed and approving this, and we've met or exceeded in some of those areas. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker.
Candy Unglob Albin, and then Paul McCain.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Candy Unglob Albin, 2064 Mistletoe Court. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission. I'm a lifelong, fifth-generation Lutheran and a proud member of Ministry of Faith Lutheran Church. In 1970, 55 years ago, my family moved to Tallahassee. And the Lutheran church my family joined was Epiphany Lutheran, located on the second, the two-lane rural highway on Thomasville Road.
Could you pull that microphone down just a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
Epiphany used to be where the School of Arts and Science is currently located. Epiphany sold the property and moved to Kalarn Lakes because the neighborhood was opposed to them, the church building on their property. So I want you to look at the Arts and Science School now, and look what it's become. When I attended Leon High School, I would have classmates ask, "Where do you go to church?" So I told them I'm a Lutheran. And do you know, one of them actually asked me, "What do you, what is a Lutheran? Do you worship heads of lettuce?" Now, we don't worship heads of lettuce, and that was kind of shocking since I was raised in Lutheran school, and everyone was Lutheran. Let me believe, let me briefly explain what it means to be Lutheran. As Lutherans, we are a Christian denomination founded on the teachings of Martin Luther during the Reformation. We emphasize salvation through faith, grace, and scripture alone. Our mission is rooted in serving God by serving others, fostering a sense of community, and living out our faith through love, generosity, and outreach. For decades, Faith Lutheran has been a cornerstone of this community, providing spiritual guidance and charitable services and benefits of all ages and backgrounds. From community events to offering support to families in need, we aim to be more than a place of worship. We strive to be a light of hope and service. Our request for rezoning is an important step in continuing that mission. By converting our property to commercial use, we intend to generate income for our ministry. This change will allow us to use our resources more effectively while still maintaining our core focus as a church. We believe this rezoning aligns with the city's vision of growth and development, as it will create jobs and enhance the neighborhood. At the same time, we are committed to ensuring that our property continues to reflect the values of our church and the surrounding community. In conclusion, our goal is not only to sustain our church
30 seconds.
but to expand our ability to serve. We deeply value the partnerships we have with this city and its residents, and we see that this rezoning was an opportunity for further contribution to the welfare and vibrance of our community. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I ask you to request for the rezoning of our church prosperity. May God bless you and your family
Thank you.
and Merry Christmas, and have a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Paul McCain. He'll be followed by Cecil Bradley.
Name and address for the record, please. You have 3 minutes.
My name's Paul McCain. I live at 1300 Turkey Roost Court, Tallahassee. I'm kind of speaking for myself now. I'm very much in favor of this rezoning. I'm a member of Faith Lutheran Church, have been for a very long time. I'm coming from a different point place than most of the people in the church did. I was in favor of selling the entire property and just moving on and buying elsewhere. The majority of the people wanted to stay. So that puts us where we are right now. We need to sell that lower section to get out of this oppressive loan that we took a long time ago in order to buy this property. So we buy this, we do this, now we can build our church on the upper section, somewhere near where the old church used to be. And that's basically where we're at right now. I'm empathetic to the people that want things to stay like they always have been and always forever, but it's just not going to happen. No one had any right of expectation that this very valuable property is not going to be developed, a commercial property. The way it stands right now, we want to put a very nice church, brand-new, on the upper section of this property. Apparently, people have a problem with that. The petition that's floating around, I hear there's 2,300, 1,300 people that signed it. it, well, it was signed under false premises. So it should be discarded, because there is no conservation easement. The only thing that's there is a ditch, a very dangerous ditch, with oak trees hanging over it. And if you, anybody that's lived in Tallahassee knows, these oak trees are going to fall, they have fallen. And we've lost some on our property already. Nobody in the area came to help us do anything about it, but these oak trees on this ditch due to erosion, they're half-rooted. You can, if you go there now, you can see some that are already fallen there. Some of these could reach Thomasville Road. It's a liability for us, and that needs to be addressed. If we can build on our property, we will then address that. The homeowners have always had options if they thought this was something they really wanted. They could have bought the property when we did. They didn't choose to do that. They could have bought it when we put it for sale, because obviously, it's going to go commercial. They didn't choose to do that either. Really, they could, they could do it now if they wanted to, I imagine. They could buy it. It would cost more, price has gone up, obviously, and they'd have to reimburse the developer. But, you know, if there's 1,300 people, divide that up, wouldn't cost the homeowners that much to buy the property, they could do what they want. Leave the top part alone, you can have that liability for yourself.
30 seconds.
Down below, the homeless people will love it, because they've always been camping down there quite a bit. I've had to go back there and put a fire out before because the fire got away. So, bottom line is, I highly, I really would love to see this go through, so we can finally, we planned this for a long time, so we can, we can build our church. And that's what this is all about. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Cecil Bradley, followed by David De La Paz.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Cecil Bradley, and I live at 2930 Northumberland Drive, in the North Hampton area, Treddington Park area. I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak. And my perception is different from other concerns, because I'm a homeowner, and I've lived in Tallahassee for 24 years, 34 years. And when I flew here to Tallahassee for a job interview, it was almost like a hidden with trees and canopies, it was awesome. So now I assume that Tallahassee is like, a third of their trees are gone. And I do understand the balance of development and growth and pleasure in a community, but once again, about 20, 30, 40 years ago, you're talking about Tallahassee was one of the most beautiful cities in the state. So it's not that way anymore. Now it's become like Miami, Jacksonville, Tampa, and especially Thomasville Road. And I want to address, not just the PUD, and I understand the church owners have properties that they want to sell, or they may need to move, I understand that, but the challenges are the traffic. And ever since I've been driving home through, down to Velvet Dairy Road and up to Cary Forest, I am just amazed, compared to three or four years ago, the traffic from Cary Forest is just way backed up, all the way to pass Velvet Dairy when I want to go home north. So it's really bizarre how that's happened. And also, when you want to turn right and go south, in the mornings, turn left and go south, I've seen a lot of accidents occur. And if the PUD is approved, it would greatly increase traffic in that area that's already congested. So think about the businesses on the right side, northeast side of town. We have more traffic, more turning lanes, and many more accidents. So if you go on the west side or the south side, I've seen this happen. And it's a big concern. The big concern really is traffic, and I recommend that we continue to do traffic studies and really make sure, and ensure, that Thomasville Road is not going to become just such a disaster zone of traffic accidents. And I do sympathize-
You're at 30 seconds.
...with the advocates in St. Ives community. I do empathize with that. 30 feet, 20 feet, a 30-foot buffer does not really help if you think about the traffic, the noise, all the lights. And if you have houses behind gas stations, I mean, would you be happy? And think about a situation where there's so much potential and issues, and I don't think people would be happy with the current PUD, but again, I ask you to oppose this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
David De La Paz is our next speaker, followed by Michael Schultz.
Name and address for the record, please. You have 3 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Daley. My name is David De La Paz, 390 Clark Side Circle, Crawfordville, Florida. I'm the president of the Church Council for Faith Lutheran Church, and I strongly support the amendment. I have a couple of things that I want to point out. I want you to think about what St. Ives residents are asking you to do. There's other consideration besides what's going on here. They're asking you to deny the request, deny the application, when it is consistent with the comp plan, and when you have a unanimous finding, findings from the Planning Commission and a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve this amendment. You want to know the way you serve the purpose of the comp plan is to follow it. That's how you apply, that's how you accomplish the purpose of a comp plan. One way you do not serve, accomplish the purpose of a comp plan is to add on restrictions onto private property that someone else wants to glum on there, because they don't like the result that would be directed by the comp plan. The fact of the matter is, is that we are in compliance with the comp plan. We are in compliance with every single bit of the comp plan. Not one bit of it has been violated. So the idea that you're somehow countermanding the purpose of the comp plan is not true. You're absolutely complying with it if you were to approve this pud amendment. And there is another aspect of that. You cannot retroactively put restrictions that are undefined onto someone else's property. What are the definitions, what are the defined parameters of this canopy protection zone that they're saying exists? If it's true, then it's got components. What are they? What burden does that put on us as the property owner to comply with? Are we limited? Can we not do anything with the property? You know, I'm almost getting the sense here that the church, well, we don't have any rights. What business do they have to rezone their property? What business do we have? We have the right that every other property owner has. You know what that right is? To get the best and highest use out of our property. And you darn right-
30 seconds.
-we have the right to do that. Members of Faith Lutheran Church, please stand. We're talking about our rights. These are our rights, to put that undeveloped, that underutilized property to the highest and best use we can possibly put it to, and that is what the comp plan allows. And you should not allow that right to be denied by neighbors wanting to convince you to-
You're at 3 minutes.
...prohibit us from doing something that's allowed under the code.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Michael Schultz.
Jim, where are we in this thing?
We've got about eight speakers left, I believe, give or take, and Mr. Schultz will be followed by Kathy Oakley.
Okay. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Schultz. I live at 2531 Capstone Drive. That means I live in Ox Bottom Manor. It is about a couple hundred, 3, 400 yards, 2, 3, 400 yards from the development on the west side of Thomasville Road. I have served as the pastor at Faith Lutheran Church for the past two years of its 30 history, 30-year history. I've heard a lot of people talking about how they've been around a long time. Boy, do I not have the tenure issue on my side. Just two years. I'm the son of a Lutheran pastor. My youngest son is a Lutheran pastor. I've been a Lutheran pastor for 35 years. In our church body, we don't go looking for a job, the job comes looking for you. So I was finishing up some work in Wisconsin, and I had a choice between a couple of places to go and serve. One of them was South Central Minnesota, and the other one was Tallahassee, Florida. It was not a particularly difficult decision. But now having, when you go through that process in our church body, you call a lot of the church members, because you didn't go there and interview, you weren't seeking a job in a certain place, you just asked them a bunch of questions about what's going on with their church. And so I talked to a number of people, and I was about as fully informed as a person can be about what was going on at the church a couple of years ago, and it's still pretty much the same. It was not, it was not when I was considering the call, nor is it now, a church that was failing or in decline. It was, it's a congregation that's been blessed by the Lord to meet its financial obligations. Paul spoke before about the mortgage that we have. That's another advantage for being here only two years. The mortgage was taken out 17 years ago, I've only had it for two. But the congregation has been blessed in that way as far as being financially solvent. They're not in dire financial straits of any kind. Plans come and plans go, but the congregation has had plans when I first contacted them a couple of years ago, and we still have ongoing plans. We're just seeing how the good Lord's going to bring those things about. Like many churches, COVID was a major adjustment for us, but since that time, we've been getting back to normal, we've returned to two services on Sunday, and we are continuing the work. I am speaking in favor of the proposal because it puts on the table-
You have 30 seconds.
I'm speaking in favor of the proposal because it puts on the table all the options for serving in the best ways that we can. I'm confident that the Lord will lead us in a good direction. Thanks for your time.
Our next speaker, please.
Kathy Oakley, then Danielle Macbeth Riley.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I am Katherine Oakley, and my address is 5349 St. Ives Lane. I'm a homeowner, looking out of my front yard, I will directly have a view of the commercial property, should it be developed. I personally am opposed to the development, and I don't need to reiterate all the comments that have been made here tonight. I respect the right of the property owner to sell its property, but just because you can do something doesn't mean that you should do something. And this is probably going to be a little unorthodox, but my hope and my prayer for this decision is that God's will will prevail, not the will of the homeowners in the surrounding neighborhoods, not the will of the church members and the church leaders, and with all due respect, not the will of you all that are going to be voting on this, but that God's will will prevail. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Danielle Macbeth Riley, and then we will hear from Debbie Hodges.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Happy holidays, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the commission. My name is Danielle Macbeth Riley. I'm a resident of 5351 Caris Brook Lane, Pembroke Place, Homeowners Association President. And I won't reiterate everything that's been said either. I think that we have articulated our opposition thoroughly, both in writing and at the previous stops along the way with this journey. I would just ask that, in light of the contrary nature of this amendment, that would seriously and permanently alter the character of our neighborhoods, not just one neighborhood, as is stated in the comprehensive plan, but well over a dozen neighborhoods, that you would oppose this amendment. I echo all sentiments on behalf of the Pembroke Place Homeowners Association in opposition, and would strongly encourage a school impact analysis, as well as a traffic study before, not after, should this process proceed. We have seen enormous traffic congestion, noise pollution, light pollution, and any number of properties that are currently unoccupied. So prior to any approval of this amendment, we would request your serious consideration of those dynamics. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Debbie Hodges is our next speaker, then Richard Hartman. Debbie Hodges.
Your name and address for the record, please.
I am Debbie Hodges. I live at 5391 Pembroke Place. I am against this amendment. I am here to quote from the website, the city of Tallahassee website, the City Commission vision and mission states, "A creative capital city that supports a strong community with vibrant neighborhoods." And they are protecting our natural resources and preserving our unique character." This is from the city statements. Also, there is a five-year strategic plan from the city of Tallahassee. One of the goals is quality of life. And of those three priorities, one is enhancing livability and preserve the unique characteristics of neighborhoods. And the quality of life states that is, "The general health and well-being, comfort and happiness experienced by citizens. With a continued focus to enhance community and neighborhood vitality, the city is ensuring all residents are proud to call Tallahassee home." In addition, there is, under the Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, land use goal is protect and enhance quality of life in this community, giving the citizens opportunities while channeling inevitable growth into locations and activities that protect the natural and aesthetic environments and residential neighborhoods. Commissioners, just wanted to ask if you knew that back in October, we had a planning commission, Development Review Committee meeting, and the committee voted to deny this application. The city attorney told the committee members that they could not deny it, because the staff had basically dotted all the i's and crossed the t's and hit all the regulations and policies and all, and they, she thought, they could not deny it based on emotion. The planning commission, after they had heard all of us, they did not want this application to go forward. They then hesitantly talked about it-
You're at 30 seconds remaining.
...and voted again. But what I want to do is just make sure that this is what our neighborhood looks like. This is probably what your neighborhood looks like, what your backyard looks like. And this is what Mr. Gazveney's going to do to it. Construction, he's going to tear down all the trees and bushes-
You're at 3 minutes.
...and clear-cutting.
Thank you very much.
And this is what they're going to look at, the back of a building. And I'm sure if this was in your backyard-
Thank you.
-you would not allow it.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Richard Hartman. And then the next speaker will be John Griffin.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Richard Hackman. I live at 2045 East Gateway in Tallahassee. I'm a member of Faith Lutheran Church. I wanted to address this from a slightly different perspective, following on with what our ministry is actually all about. The property sale of the lower part of the property will enhance our financial situation considerably, allowing us to grow our ministry, and that's really the driver behind this. Our outreach program is one where we want to live in Christ and bring people to know Christ. We have some goals and objectives that we have set. We want to reach out and be able to communicate with about 33,000 unchurched individuals in the Tallahassee area, and try to bring them to faith. It's ambitious, but everything that's ambitious comes with a price tag. We currently have outreach missions where we serve under-churched individuals. We have a program called Jesus Cares, where we have autistic young adults to come in, and we run a Bible study and work with them to grow their faith. And surprisingly, a number of them are really well-versed in the Bible. The other thing that's really special about them- The other thing that's really special about them is they are all members of a different church. They don't go to our church, so we are promoting outside interests to come and take part, participate in programs that we offer. We don't want to just, we don't want to just leave it within the church. We want to grow a younger church membership also. We have events, like we do our Easter sunrise service at McClay Gardens every year. We have a Christmas sing-along along with Jesus Cares and the soccer camp that was mentioned recently. All of these are outreach programs where we are trying to bring other people to faith in Christ. This helps our community, okay? It creates better citizens, we feel, and in the long term, we want to bring people to salvation. Problem we're running into right now, as has been mentioned a couple of times, is the facilities are older. I just finished repairing, I was the old property manager, one of them. I just finished repairing a broken copper pipe that was inside the walls, okay? It was tedious, took a day or two. But that's an example of the type of, thank you, that was an example of the type of things we need to be, to modernize our facilities. The opportunity for debt reduction and being able to perform that comes with a cost, and that's what we're trying to get to as part of our program. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Griffin, followed by Chris Petley.
Your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes.
Sure. Good evening. My name is John Griffin. I live at 2578 Manassas Way, Tallahassee. I live in the Bull Run subdivision, which is approximately 400 to 500 yards west of the property that is subject to the PUD. Full disclosure, I'm also a member of Faith Lutheran Church. I'm not going to reiterate what has been said by many of the faith members that have come up here. I will just say two things. First of all, it's my understanding with regard to the traffic issue, and being a resident of Bull Run, I'm keenly aware of the growth that's taken place in the northeast side and the traffic situation there. But it's also my understanding that the reconfiguration of Veldedary and Ox Bottom was done at the recommendation of the school board as well as FDOT with a specific purpose of alleviating traffic on Cary Forest. So I would take somewhat of an issue with assertions being made that somehow approval of the PUD amendment is going to drastically change traffic along Cary Forest. I think that remedy is going to come when Veldedary and Ox Bottom are tied in together. The last thing I'll mention is, as a resident of Bull Run, my wife and I did receive a copy of the petition that's been referenced, and we reviewed it, and I could not sign that because I think it contained quite a few factual inaccuracies, many of which have been brought out in this evening's presentation by your staff. On behalf of myself, as a member of faith, as a resident of Bull Run, I believe approval of the PUD amendment is consistent with the comp plan. I don't think it's going to create the litany of horribles that you have heard. I am empathetic. I know what growth has brought to this part of town. I've lived through it. I moved to the northeast side of town when Tallahassee was, when Thomasville Road was a two-lane road. When we moved into Bull Run 11 years ago, it was not near the development that there is now. But that's just the way it is. That's the way Tallahassee has grown, and I would urge you to approve the PUD amendment as being consistent with the comp plan. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Chris, excuse me. Chris Petley is next, followed by Thomas Zelke. Chris Petley? Not seeing Petley, then Thomas Zelke.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tom Zelke, and I live at 130 Murdis Trace. I have been in Tallahassee since the fall of 1983, when I took a position at FSU. I am a former council president at Faith Lutheran. I was termed out this past year, so I know a little bit about what has happened. It's actually a fairly simple process. Faith Lutheran owns about eight acres on the southeast corner of the intersection of Thomasville Road and Cary Forest Parkway. And the idea was suggested that we partition that property into a lower four acres, which is on Thomasville Road itself, and an upper four acres. Now, the church that was on that property burned down. We're actually worshiping in a fellowship hall that has been converted to a sanctuary for us. It's a very small building, and there's nothing else on that property. The upper portion of the property is a grass parking lot. We can't build on that because of the current PUD. The section along Thomasville Road itself is actually a 30-foot ditch. The city comes out on a quarterly basis with a big tractor that has two bushhogs on arms, and it mows down that ditch and just cuts all of the overgrowth from that ditch. It's a nightmare in terms of maintenance. So our purpose is to sell the lower four acres, use that to pay off our current mortgage, and to build a sanctuary on the upper section of the land. The church will remain on that corner of Thomasville Road and Cary Forest. The lower section will have entrance and exit to Thomasville Road. The church stays on that southeast corner of the intersection. And the whole purpose, as I said, is to get ourselves a useful sanctuary, return the original building back to its use as a fellowship hall and as an education hall. That's what we're trying to do.
You have 30 seconds.
And the city staff has been through this and has given their opinions about the revisions to the PUD. I encourage you to vote in favor of these revisions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ann Biddling Meyer, and then Jonathan Kohay. Those are the last two speakers I have at this time, so unless I receive additional speaker cards, Ann Biddling Meyer is next, and then Jonathan Kohay.
Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Ann Biddling Meyer, 1920 Harriet Drive. I'm asking you commissioners to look at the big picture here and do the right thing. I was the co-chair of the original committee that wrote the City of Tallahassee's tree ordinance back in the 80s. I also initiated the county's tree ordinance just before that. In addition, I was the chairman of the Canopy Road Citizens Committee for six years, so I've seen what's been going on with trees during the last 35 years. Thomasville Road is not a canopy road, but that does not mean that we should not preserve the canopy trees along Thomasville Road. I am appalled that a developer could ask and expect rezoning that would negatively affect a pristine canopy along Thomasville and four neighborhoods. Reducing the buffer to 30 feet indicates a gross misunderstanding of length and size. 30 feet is nothing. 30 feet cannot sustain vegetation or even re-landscaping. The trees wiped out to reduce this buffer could also be a good protection during storms, not to mention the resulting flooding and erosion that would occur with tree removal, and we've all seen this around Tallahassee. Why would you even consider trading trees and green space for concrete and traffic? Once this green space is gone, it's gone. There are other blighted areas around the city that have already been destroyed. This is where we should be doing rezoning and increasing density. This is not the right place, nor the right parcel, for this kind of activity. Nothing good can come of this for our community, except for maybe the developers' profits. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jonathan Kohay.
Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Jonathan Kohay, 9365 Settler Avenue, Tallahassee. And Mr. Cook, I'm impressed with you pronouncing my last name correctly the first time, so thank you. I don't get that very often.
I find it very corny now and then.
Yeah. I am a member at Faith. I have been a resident of Tallahassee for over 20 years, and I've seen a lot of development go on Thomasville Road. When I moved here, Walmart wasn't there, the Starbucks across the street, and the Willie's BBQ, and that whole strip there, there was nothing there. Also, talking about the Ox Bottom and the Thomasville Road development, that's going to affect traffic, yes, but how much is a four-acre tract going to affect the traffic along there? It's already there. There's been tens of acres developed already with Walmart and all the other properties along there. Is a four-acre tract really going to affect traffic that much? And to give you a perspective of the buffer zone, the 30 feet is roughly the width of your dais right there. So just to put that in perspective. And also, I think it boils down to me to one thing. Does Faith have a right to sell a portion of its property? Just does anyone in this room who has property, whether it's real estate, whether it's an automobile or whatever, they have a right to sell that? And that's the only thing that we're asking for, is a right to sell a portion of our property. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Next speaker, please.
I have had one additional speaker, that's Ken Hodges.
Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Ken Hodges, 5391 Pembroke Place in Tallahassee, 32309. I chose to speak when I had not planned to, just recently signed up, because I don't think enough emphasis has been put on the traffic issue. We've had a couple of people refer to it, but I'd like to point out that once that intersection at Veldedary and Cary Forest is completed, and you have people exiting from this strip, that intersection is going to be really, really clogged. Then if you consider taking the traffic onto Cary Forest, the people that want to go southbound are going to have to cross three lanes of traffic to make a U-turn in front of the CVS. If they choose to proceed, to make a right onto Cary Forest, the next available road is the road that runs in front of De Soto Trail. So this idea that we'll do a study after this has been approved, a traffic study, seems ridiculous, truthfully, and I think at a previous meeting, someone asked about the school board, wouldn't they be concerned? They said, well, they'll be involved afterwards. The idea, that's a cart before the horse. I think traffic is a major problem on Cary Forest, on Thomasville Highway, and this is going to exacerbate it. I'd like for you to, as someone asked before, look at a study before you approve this and vote no for this. Thank you.
That's the last speaker I have at this time. Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. First of all, thank you to everyone who came out to speak tonight. As you must know, this is a difficult decision, and we're going to, now that we've heard from everyone, go into discussion, commission discussion, so we can come to a decision, come to a conclusion. And before we do that, I want to ask the city attorney a question. Madam Attorney?
Yes, Commissioner.
What are we legally bound to do?
So, Commissioner, as you know, any commission decision to deny an application like this must be based on, have a factual basis. In this case, based on the planning staff analysis, our office has not identified any law, rule, or regulation that would support a denial because there does not appear, again, based on the staff's analysis, the planning staff analysis, there does not appear to be any inconsistency.
And if we were to do that, what would happen?
It would be up to the applicant, but there likely would be legal action taken.
Okay. And beyond, beyond the legal, I'm sorry, we haven't, we haven't, we've listened, now it's time for us to talk. Thank you. And if the applicant takes legal action, there could possibly be an opportunity to do what?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't understand your question.
What would happen if they took legal action?
Oh, so if there were legal action, then there would be a possibility that the decision of the city commission would be overturned in that appeal.
Thank you. I'm starting with, the mayor's back, so you got your gavel back.
Thank you. Commissioner Matt Low, your record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On point on that, Madam Attorney, you said based on the planning staff's analysis, but if this board identified areas of the comp plan that they found inconsistency with and ruled denial based on that, that would have legal standing?
The only thing that our office can look at is what we have seen from planning staff's analysis and the facts that were developed from that. If there were other facts established by the, by this body, maybe, but I'm not sure that that can happen at this point.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I have some questions, and I think, Mr. White, you may be best suited, if that's okay, Mr. So we've heard a lot about this area that was defined in the original PUD as 150 feet from the center line of Thomasville Road. I think in the maps from 1987, it's defined as a canopy preservation area. We've heard it called a canopy protection area, which I think got defined as protecting anything larger than four inches, or any trees larger than four inches, I'm at one point. We've seen other references to being conservation easements. I think we've all identified there's not a legally binding conservation easement on the area. But I'm also seeing, it also seems to be the response that it's actually nothing. It's not preservation, it's not conservation, it's not protection, it's just words on the map from when it was adopted in 1987. So can you help me get clarity on what was specifically approved, when this was approved in 1987, and what this was meant to be?
Yeah, if we're using today's terminology, we'd call it a landscape buffer. And so the PUD would call for basically a buffer from the center line of the road. Obviously, the road's not going to be vegetated, I mean, that's logical. But kind of the area from the center line of the road, you would have the roadway, and then you would have DOT right-of-way, and then from the property line, kind of on the remainder of that 150-foot distance would be basically a vegetated buffer.
Okay. And so before we get to the land use of the proposal, everything that comes forward for a change needs to be consistent with the conservation element as well. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And the goal of the conservation element is to preserve, protect, and conserve the ecological value and diversity of natural resources in Tallahassee and Leon County. So in my research, I'm looking at the comp plan, and you can tell me how your interpretation differs, this canopy preservation area, as we established earlier, they weren't intending to point to anything canopy road-related, because Thomasville Road has never been a designated canopy road. So the protections that were meant to be put in place in this PUD are not related to a canopy road, per se, but canopy as the definition of a tree, of a natural area. Looking at the conservation element, there is, preservation area is specific to what can be developed, and this was titled a preservation area. And when we look at, you know, the different things that could be related to preservation and the amount of growth that's supposed to be allowed in a preservation area, how is this consistent with defined preservation areas in the conservation element?
So the conservation element kind of sets the parameters for the land development code. And in the land development code, there are specific definitions for each of those kind of things that make up a preservation area or a conservation area, and the PUD kind of using that terminology- And a PUD kind of using that terminology or labeling something a preservation area doesn't by defect kind of make it what the Land Development Code defines as that. So I think of, like, a good example or a good way of framing that, preservation area, the conservation area, as defined in the comp plan and then further defined in the code, kind of, there's a list of like A, B, C, D, kind of listing what falls under that criteria. And each of those is defined in the code and has kind of a specific meaning. And so just kind of having a PUD that labels something, one thing, does not mean that the code actually, it meets the code definition of that, so.
Okay. Do you disagree that it meets the definition of an area of environmental significance?
It does not meet the definition of an area of environmental significance. Like, trees are nice, and they provide ecological value and services, but that doesn't mean that that specific area has the quantity and the type of trees that meet that threshold of that definition.
And so I want to turn to the staff comments that were submitted by, in one of the neighborhood packets, that spoke specifically to the creation of this preservation area. It says for the 150-foot canopy preservation area, the PUD requires component C to be set back 150 feet from the center line of Thomasville Road. The strip is designated as a canopy protection area within which all trees four inches and larger will be protected. The reason for the protection was twofold. Initial evaluation of the area found that it was the old roadbed where Thomasville Road, which held some water and served as a drainage area. In 1989, the city was granted the old Thomasville Road natural area as an easement for use as drainage area. Additionally, the staff report stated that the intent to preserve the natural landscape consistent with the housing, public service, and energy elements of the then-existing comprehensive plan. This sounds to me like it was more than they were trying to create a buffer. It seems like they were trying to create a preservation area for the entirety of that acreage. So I'm struggling to see how we can look at what was created in the global plan, the entire 260 acres, looking at this definition. And I grant that Thomasville Road has been extended, but I don't see how we eliminate an entire preservation area just because an applicant's asking us to change it to a 20-foot buffer. It seems like they can ask for changes, but I don't see anything that would support removing the 150-foot. And I think we talked earlier, maybe it's 140 feet now. So say the center line gives you 70 feet, that's still an 80-foot preservation area and/or buffer, depending on how you look at it. And I'm looking at 40 years of history and the original adoption, 40 years of history and amendments and changes, and they're all telling us that this area was supposed to be protected under preservation. And I understand private property rights, and I understand that argument, but when we look at development within a city, we're all bought in to this plan, that we're going to do this together. The decisions we make with our private land have impacts on traffic, they have impacts on our natural environment, they have impacts on our schools, and that's why we set up these rules to follow what we can do with the land. And to me, it looks like for 40 years, it had been understood, and I know it was said, you know, where is it, what does it mean? Well, it means 150 feet from the center line of Thomasville Road. I mean, that's what was put into writing, and I don't see any reason supporting that we change that. And I think it should be preserved based on the very real wording of the goals and criteria of the conservation element. I think it's clear that's exactly why we have a conservation element, to make sure when we have new development and as we grow as a city, that there are areas that are being protected. And I think when this PUD was established, that was what the intent then, I think it's consistently been upheld to be the intent. So that's my first objection. I wanted to raise also on the use. It was asked by the neighbors, and will you speak to the Bradfordville, how this change is consistent with the Bradfordville mixed-use? Is it low-medium density? Or, I'm not sure the term that it's been added to.
It would be the Urban Pedestrian Center Development District. And so the Bradfordville mixed-use land use category kind of lays out various options in terms of what development pattern would be applicable within that land use category. One of those is the Urban Pedestrian Center Development Pattern, which allows commercial development up to maximum intensity of 20,000 gross square feet per acre, and then has like densities and intensities associated with that, all of the development patterns to do. And so by creating the Velda Square Shops district that has those same maximum and minimum densities and intensities, you're in effect implementing that district, which is one of the ones that's allowed within the Bradfordville mixed-use land use category.
And is my understanding correct, like, that district, that classification, is intended to be pedestrian-friendly town center shops, much like we maybe saw in Canopy that switched to a gas station, and we got a lot of backlash? It's meant to be more of a walkable, small-scale commercial use? Is that the intent of the pedestrian?
Generally, the intent, it has location criteria, so it says it has to kind of front an arterial road, which Thomasville Road does that, and then it has a maximum intensity. It doesn't go into specifically what uses would be allowed that's in the zoning or would be defined by the PUD, but in terms of minimum, maximum density, minimal, maximum intensity in the location standards, it meets all of those.
So it doesn't dictate what zoning should be in the PUD? That part?
The comp plan doesn't say exactly what uses would be allowed, other than broad categories, so, you know, commercial uses, retail uses, but it doesn't go in specifically and say yes to a coffee shop, no to a bakery.
Sure. And it says the intended function, create a village atmosphere with an emphasis on low to medium density residential land use, small-scale commercial shopping opportunities in area residence. That sounds like the type of commercial most people wouldn't mind maybe having 20 feet from their backyard. Like, that sounds nice, I would say. So on the, what's before us today in the PUD, on the uses that will be added for the shops, I saw uses like restaurants with drive-through facilities. And that, to me, seems to be inconsistent with a village atmosphere. That seems to be quite opposite. It seems more related to sprawl and not really best-serving neighborhood. So can you explain how drive-through facilities became a proposed use?
So the language in the comp plan doesn't necessarily get into the uses as much as saying the parameters for design standards. And so the PUD goes in and specifically says that there has to be sidewalk connectivity and facilitate pedestrian circulation, but it doesn't, the comp plan doesn't get into specific uses defining what is constituted by something that people can walk to and something that people wouldn't be able to walk to.
Yeah, I understand that, but we have to determine if the uses that you're recommending or they're asking for in this PUD amendment are consistent with the comp plan. So while it may not specifically say no drive-throughs in Bradfordville mixed-use, it does say the intended function is to create a village atmosphere. I think it would be largely recognized that a drive-through chicken shop would not do that. Protect existing residential areas from encroachment of incompatible uses that are destructive to the character and integrity of the residential environment. I think placing giant dumpsters 20 feet through the trees as a drive-through restaurant facility meanders through would be, would encroach on the character and the quality of life in those neighborhoods. So I don't think we can say a drive-through facility is consistent with what is intended here. I think we've made mistakes like this in the past, and I think if it has the ability to be some sort of small-scale commercial use that is consistent with that village atmosphere, where people are going to walk to, I don't know, sidewalk, cafe, that's very small footprint, but we're talking about a six-lane major highway and putting a drive-through restaurant facility on that. That's not a village neighborhood use. That's drive, pulling people from a six-lane highway who are commuters into what is currently protected as a preservation area. So based on the findings, both it not being consistent with the conservation element and it not being consistent with the Bradfordville, the zoning not being consistent with what's needed for Bradfordville mixed-use, I recommend we deny this today. I would actually worry, by approving it, we'd open ourselves up to litigation, because it's not consistent with what we proposed here. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Commissioner Matlow, I appreciate your level of detail in what you're recommending. Having served on the Planning Commission, I can tell you why the Planning Commissioners changed their vote. Because once it's been declared that this is not in conflict with the comp plan, that was not written by the Planning Commissioners, was written and approved by previous members of the commission prior to us getting here, this is what we're living by. The comp plan was created more than 30 years ago. We're living by it, it can be amended and updated, but right now, the right now is that this is not in conflict with the comp plan, it is consistent with the comp plan. And as we've done many times, whether we like it or not, and having served on the Planning Commission, I didn't like having to approve things, because I understood what neighbors were saying, I can appreciate it. But the comp plan is the guiding document, and as it sits right now, this is consistent with the comp plan. And as far as the traffic studies, as far as the school, on that Planning Commission, there is a representative from the school board. I know, because there was one then, and there's one now. So that was taken up by that person who was considering that. Also, it said that this was not needed, because we're not adding dwellings, I think, homes. So the bottom line is, we may not like it, but it is consistent with the comp plan. And every time one of these come before us, and it is consistent with the comp plan, we must do what we need to do. Otherwise, as I was getting our city attorney to explain to us, otherwise, we get sued, tax dollars have to be spent to defend it, and then they get to do it anyway. So I think we just need to understand that until the comp plan is either amended or modified or what have you, the comp plan was given to us. We didn't create it, but we're having to live by it. Previous commissions gave it to us. And so at this point, as long as it is consistent with the comp plan, based on my knowledge and experience of having served on the Planning Commission, we have no choice in this matter. Well, I take that back, we do have a choice. But to be expedient about taxpayers' money and time, we must approve this, because it is consistent with the comp plan. Not to mention that this is, as we said, this is private property owned by the church. I wouldn't want anybody to come to tell me that I couldn't do stuff on my own private property, because we're, you know, we're big on private property rights. So we've heard tonight some compelling evidence that this needs to be approved, and I'm ready to support that. So I would, I will make the motion that we would approve, that we would adopt the ordinance, amend in the North Hampton PUD concept plan, which is option number one.
Option number one has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second? Seconded in by Commissioner Richardson. Let me pause real quick. Commissioner Porter, would you like to jump in for discussion?
No, Mr. Mayor, I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Matlow's comments.
All right. Commissioner Richardson, comment.
Oh, I don't have a comment. I'm seconding the motion, and I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, I'm going to weigh in, and I am going to support the recommended action as well. Number one, it was 100% approved unanimously by the DRC, by the Planning Commission. It has been found legally sufficient and to meet the criteria for approval by the attorney's office and by our planning team. And I'll also take a little different twist. I actually think that this is an appropriate development. I know this is hard for the neighborhoods to hear, but this is a major commercial corridor, and with the realignment of Ox Bottom and Velda Dairy, and with traffic improvements that are going to come into play as well, this is the type of development I truly believe that we need. I will tell you as well that I am pleased to hear from the church that the idea is to maintain the church campus, build anew, but to maintain the church campus. If there is a pressure point between the neighborhoods and the churches, is you do have some houses that directly see into your property, and I think that there's a great good faith effort for the church community to truly work with the neighborhoods on your property where you plan on rebuilding, to make sure that we can all live with compassion and care. And I am seeing some heads being shaking in agreement as well. So I do intend to support the motion on the table. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for the record, I think this is a very dangerous precedent for this body to set, ignoring well-established preservation areas. I think the Northeast has been such a successful and desired community because of the thoughtful planning that went into it, even with the expansion of a six-lane highway to continue to preserve what is a natural buffer and not fall into ever-ending fast-food chains like we've seen on North Monroe or Capital Circle, or other corridors. And I believe that this erodes that, and it's going to continue to expand and become a less desirable roadway based on this decision. I continue to believe it's not consistent with the conservation element, it's certainly not consistent that drive-through facilities, Bradfordville mixed-use, and I haven't heard any arguments from anyone on this board that it is consistent, or rebutting them, other than saying it is consistent. And I'm not sure how to take those arguments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. And respectfully, I hear you, but I disagree with your subjective speculation on what is going to be proposed. I think that needs to go through the permitting process as well. But I'm here to tell you that from a six-lane major thoroughfare and the realignment and with the zero-impact, not proposing, I mean, residential to the schools, I do believe that this is a good development opportunity. And so we will agree to disagree on this, but I need to say that on the record as well. We have a motion on the table.
One final comment.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner Matlow.
And just for clarification, it's not subjective. This is a legally binding decision that will allow for drive-through restaurant facilities. Maybe that's not the intent of the developers to build, but what's before us today is to allow that zoning use, and that zoning use is inconsistent with Bradfordville mixed-use and the village atmosphere it's set to create. I understand your comments of it's a six-lane highway, and those things are a little bit different, but nevertheless, that property is identified as Bradfordville mixed-use, which had specific criteria. Thank you.
Right. Well, and once again, there is a difference between rezoning and what is permitted and what actually goes through the permitting process, and the steps that need to be taken and addressed during permitting, and the opportunity for the residents, once again, to weigh in through permitting, the city to participate, obviously, through the permitting process as well. So I do understand what you're saying. I do think it is very subjective, and quite frankly, a little misleading to say that that is exactly what's going to go there, when we haven't even seen anything being submitted through the permitting process. But I hear you. I hear you, Commissioner Matlow. We have a motion on the table that was made by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And the motion passes three to two, with the mayor, the mayor pro Tim, Commissioner Richardson voting in favor, Commissioner Matlow, Commissioner Porter in dissent. Do we have anything else to come before us during the public hearing?
No. No, we do not.
Okay. We are back on policy formation and direction out of number 12.07. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 12.0.
Hold on just a second. Do we need to take a five-minute break, or are we good to go? Keep going.
No, keep going.
Okay. Keep going. Mr. Cook.
Yeah.
Mayor, item 12.07 is Sunset Review.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're still trying to finish the last part of our meeting. So if we could keep the murmur down as we're leaving, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
City Commission. City Commission Policy 238 deals with debt management. It was last updated in January of 2020, and it's subject to a sunset review every five years. So, we are at that point. There are some very minor revisions, nothing substantive in the way we manage our debt program. And so, those minor updates are brought to you and recommended for approval as part of the sunset review process, and we'll bring it back again in five years.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioners, direction.
Move for our option one.
Second.
Option number one's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five to zero. We're on item number 12.08. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the procurement of security services. For the city, we seek the Commission's approval to award a contract for armed and unarmed security guard services to Get In Security Corporation and authorize me or my designated to negotiate the contract. This one was added to your agenda as the procurement process was fully completed.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No speakers.
Excellent. Commissioners.
Staff recommendation, option number one.
Option number one's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five to zero. Do we have any other business come before us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
Okay. We're on un-agenda speakers. Mr. Cook, how many speakers do we have this evening?
We have nine speakers at this time, Mayor.
All right. Let's begin.
The first speaker, Mark Walinga. Then, our next speaker is Ally M. Ally M. Moving to the next, Stanley Sims. We may not have nine speakers, Mayor. Delatory Hollinger.
Your name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes. I think we're trying to get the camera working up. Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Delatory Hollinger, 750 Wells Street, Greater Bond Neighborhood. I'm privileged to be joined by Ms. Jacqueline Perkins, Community Action Team Lead for Greater Bond Cat Team, Dr. Vanessa L. Williams, President of the Greater Bond Neighborhood Association, was also here earlier, but she did have to leave. As private citizens, we have been lent the support of others, and we have embarked upon the noble endeavor to mark the grave site and place a historical marker at the home site of Ms. E. Lilian Spencer, a Tallahassee-born educator and athletic icon who lived her entire life on Eugenia Street. Her father, the Reverend Abraham Spencer, had been pastor of Fountain Chapel Church. She graduated from FAMU in 1926 with a degree in math administration and supervision, and began to play professional tennis on the segregated national tennis circuit. She was the Florida Tennis Association's Women's Singles Champion in 1931, and won a national tennis title at the 1937 American Tennis Association Nationals, the women's doubles match with Bertha Isaacs of Nassau, Bahamas. Ms. Spencer would go on to become the principal of Bond Junior High School from 1941 to 1951, where she was principal, girls' basketball coach, boys' basketball coach, athletic director, and a math teacher, all simultaneously. She coached her basketball teams at Bond School to state championships, and was the first woman to serve as principal of an inner-city school at the secondary level in Leon County's history, and the first woman to preside over any Leon County school, which offered senior grades education. Over 700 students attended Bond School at that time. She died in 1957 at the age of 51. We're here tonight to ask that the City Commission make a motion to approve an honorary designation of Campbell Street as E. Lilian Spencer Avenue. Of course, an honorary designation does not officially change the name of the street. I had a chance to speak with Mr. Beasley about her before he left, and he lived a street over from her on Wells, and he said that she was just super. We ask humbly that you motion to approve the honorary designation of Campbell to E. Lilian Spencer Avenue, so that the young people who attend Bond can see her name every day as they walk and ride to school, and perhaps, they too can aspire to be all that they can be on and off the field. It's also important to note that Dr. Henry Lewis III, Cat Team Lead, Ms. Jackie Perkins, Cat Team Lead, Willeen Footman, Cat Team Lead and Cat Team Chair, and Dr. Vanessa Williams, Greater Bond Neighborhood Association President, all enthusiastically endorse this proposal and ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Al Williams. And will be followed by Harry Brown.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Al Williams, 605 Gore Avenue, College Terrace Neighborhood. Hello, guys. My name is Al Williams, a proud native of Tallahassee, born and raised in this beautiful city. As a two-time graduate of Florida A&amp;M, a third-generation Rattler, I take immense pride in my roots. My parents are also born in Tallahassee, Florida, and still reside here on the South Side, furthering my deep connection with the community. Currently, I serve as the Head of Public Relations of Capital Area Healthy Start, and I currently work with mothers from the ages of zero to three to make sure that they have the prenatal health care. Also, I am the CEO of a local nonprofit, Capital City Cultural Community Outreach, and I am the founder of the Fourth Annual Juneteenth Festival, which takes place at Cascade Park every year since its inception in 2020. Thank you for allowing me to speak at this opportunity today. Over the past four years, along with my dedicated two business partners, we've worked tirelessly to organize and execute the Juneteenth Festival. From the planning to the coordinating to the gathering of vendors, creating a safe place for children to play during this time, the scholarship, which has reached $10,000 over the last four years. We want to continue these efforts and make sure that many African-Americans, and not just African-Americans, understand what the unity does for us. We have changed the economic impact for Tallahassee over these last four years with this event. I come before you humbly today to ask for assistance. I've been doing this for four years on my own. It has been a lot, and I would love the help from the city of Tallahassee. I just found out today, just from a call from Jennifer Carr, that they do have scholarships that will co-sponsor your events. Of course, I did not know this. It was not privy to my knowledge. And I've been doing this for four years. So, I'm kind of alarmed that I haven't been let know of all of the information and the resources that I should be receiving to continue this event that has tremendously impacted Tallahassee, not just from the students, from entrepreneurs, from people who have vendors, from the scholarship that we give to the kids, middle school, elementary, and high school. We just have them write an essay on what it means to be empowered.
You're at 30 seconds.
I would love help from anyone. I just recently opened a board, which is basically a table from all different communities in Tallahassee, where we all can put our input together, and I would love to invite anyone to that meeting, where you guys can see how much input we get from the city of Tallahassee behind this event. All right. Thank you, guys, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Harry Brown is our next speaker, and then we'll have Regina Joseph.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Yeah. Harry Brown. I reside at 5431 Trump Road. You know, I'm here to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth. I've come here on many occasions, and I've asked you many questions. You've only answered one. And that was the one when I asked you whether you go through a checkpoint when you come into this building. You'd answer that. Answered many more. I asked you many more, you never answered. When are you going to tell us about the missing $500,000 of salary money? When are you going to tell us? See, you ain't about... When are you going to tell us? Where is that money? What are you going to do about it? What are you doing about it? What about the million dollars that's missing from scams? What are you doing about it? You know, that's taxpayers' money. You're sitting there looking at me like you're crazy, man. Give me an answer. You don't want the city to know what's going on, your community to know? You're running a raggedy government, sucker. It seems that you hate me, but that's between you and God. Every time I walk up here, you turn orange and orange. The last time, on the day after the election, I was in the restroom with you, and I spoke to you, and you didn't speak. What's with you, man? What God, what kind of God do you serve? I spoke to you in the men's room, and you said nothing. And here's how unequal things are the way you run it. A young white woman walks up here, you don't say anything to her about her name and address for the record. She speaks. I know more than three minutes, and the light never come on. What are you doing here? Don't you see it? People see it. What kind of person are you, man? I think your community wants better than that. I want to know why we do not see Commissioner Matlow or Commissioner Porter swap seats here with these two black people.
You're at 30 seconds.
What's wrong? Why is Porter constantly passed over? We'd like to see some diversity in that Pro Tim seat. And you know, at the last meeting, you said call the supervisor at the election and tell him that he ran a good election. You don't have to do that. It's just natural. That's what he's expected to do. You bring suspicion to it just having the people ask the question.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Regina Joseph, and then Thomas Spears.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
I'm not giving my address, and you know who I am. I hate coming here, and I know you're tired of seeing me, and I'm very much tired of seeing your face also. June, or January 15th, y'all are going to be voting to dissolve the Citizens Police Review Board, which is one of the very few things that we have in this city to have any accountability at all for the police. And we've seen time and time again that, as I call it, the triumvirate of evil, Daly, Diane, and Curtis do everything possible to not care about the people, whether it's voting for developments that people don't want, whether it's supporting a cop that literally got in trouble for meth. No matter what it is, y'all are always on the wrong side of history. And for once, do you ever just look yourself in the mirror and have any bit of empathy or caring for other people in this city besides the developers that lie in your pockets? When are we going to hold these three people accountable for their actions? You had all these people come in here, and you lied to their faces. You don't care about them. You don't care about us. Why are you dissolving the civilian police review board? The ACLU has shown you don't have to do that, but you choose to because you care more about being in the pockets of the Fraternal Order of Police than you care about regular people. And that's messed up. And Diane, you lied. You lied, 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 lied to everyone about what Taylor Bureau's Cup said, and y'all got rid of her. Y'all have no consciousness whatsoever, and there will be a day where you will all have to pay for your sins. So, do the right thing, and don't dissolve the civilian police review board. Do the right thing, because you will have a reckoning, and you will no longer be in those seats. Curtis, you lost by, you won by this much. This much is what you won by. But people are coming for you, Curtis. People are coming for you, Diane. People are coming for you, John. And don't look and smile at me, because you're disgusting. And I hate to have to come in here, look at your face every goddamn Wednesday. I'm tired of that.
Please control the language, at least.
Is goddamn a curse word?
Yes.
No, it's not.
All right. Please, I'm asking you to work with me on a little civility here.
Your gosh darn, your gosh darn face. I'm tired of looking at your gosh darn face every goddamn Wednesday.
Lordy.
Is that okay to say, god dang? Is that all right? I'm tired of y'all. Y'all make me sick to my stomach. Disgusting. And keep smiling, because you're not going to be smiling that much longer, because we're coming for you, John Daly. Just watch out. You will not be in that seat any longer. The people are coming for you, and you will have your day of reckoning.
Your next speaker, please.
Next is Thomas Spears, followed by Tiffany Mendez, who's the last speaker that I have.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name is Thomas Spears. I live at 32303. Like most politicians, the majority of the Commission frequently talks about being in favor of a variety of things, and then either not doing anything about them, or, and even in the case of the Citizens Police Review Board, going directly against it. Maybe since you're in a position of authority, maybe you listen to authority, if you won't listen to us. Regarding HB 601, the ACLU, who are not, you know, some wacky leftovers, or, you know, some real professionals, if you want, if it has to be that, they said nothing in the legislation prevents the review boards from reviewing police department policies and procedures on such matters as high-speed chases, use of deadly force by the police, procedures for ensuring public safety and protection of First Amendment rights at mass events, use of surveillance techniques and other policies, and can make recommendations to the department chief for the reform of those policies and the procedures. Why not support the CPRB to exist in those capacities? In the listing, in the line item, in the meeting notes, it says that there are those two lines that the CPRB could not do. Well, why not support a CPRB that does things outside of those things? No, instead, the whole thing just has to be disbanded. You just have to bend, you just have to bend the knee to DeSantis and the GOP. What does Evan Power have to say about this? Is that who's really pulling all the strings? Because we know how much he supported Commissioner Richardson's reelection, and he said he did the same thing for Commissioner Williams-Cox and Mayor Daly. Mayor Daly, you spoke at the Transgender Day of Remembrance. That's great. How about following up with the speaking by doing and making Tallahassee a sanctuary city for the LGBT community? Going to be anything close to that? How about even just reconvening the LGBTQ council that you sit directly over? That hasn't met in, when's the last time they even met? You were happy to be there with Janelle at the Transgender Remembrance, but what about getting the council to meet? Again, you say one thing, but then you don't do anything behind it. Any sort of material conditions, material improvements you can do for the people never happens. We want to talk about being so in favor of affordable housing. $27 million can go to FSU with a billion-dollar endowment. That's no problem. $135 million to the police department, when they already have at least 50% of the budget of the city. Yeah, no problem for a police department that will have water slides or whatever useless stuff. There's no point for that. That's no problem. When the people want housing, that can't happen. Again, saying one thing and actually doing another.
30 seconds.
Last year, after the genocide in Gaza was started, the mayor said you were against Islamophobia. This past week, Amnesty International said, finally, it took, you're too late, but at least they said that truly what is happening in Gaza is a genocide. But you don't support voting in favor of even a ceasefire. This could be the first city in the state of Florida to support even just a milquetoast ceasefire. Again, you say one thing, but you don't do another. We'll be here January 15th, and we're going to bring a lot of people, and it's not going to be like this the next time.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Tiffany Mendez.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Tiffany. I'll pass on the address, but I am relatively new to Tallahassee, and I have the immense privilege of... privilege of not knowing any of you very well at all. And you all have the immense privilege of getting to prove to me that you are better than what I have seen tonight in this meeting. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Citizens Police Review Board and I implore you to, to not repeal the CPRB. I argue that now more than ever, it is important for the citizens of Tallahassee to have a voice in how their, their city is policed. The Citizens Review Police Board allows our community to engage with the police force in a productive way and foster confidence and trust between citizens and law enforcement. The kind of working relationship that the CPRB can facilitate is absolutely necessary moving forward in this city. It would be shameful and it would be a disservice to the community and a disservice to the police force to dissolve the CPRB. So I ask, and I will continue to ask, and I will continue to come out and be here as they have been, to dissolve, to, to not repeal the Citizens Police Review Board. The police, the people have a right to weigh in on how police navigate their communities. That's all.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That was our last speaker, Mayor.
Sharing of ideas, Commissioner Richardson. We'll start with you.
Yeah. The only thing I had, Mr. Mayor, is a question for city manager. I was at, well, leaving the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium Board Meeting this afternoon and was approached and was made aware of the fact that city employees are not eligible for down payment assistance. Is that indeed the case? That's what I was told and I was kind of surprised to hear that, but they said they had, they had been approached twice by city employees for down payment assistance and told, and they were told that they weren't eligible as city employees for down payment assistance through the city. Mr. Mayor, I, I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner. Let me look into it and I'll, I'll let you know. Yeah, that's why I wanted to bring it up, you could look into it. Through the lenders consortium, the down payment assistance through the lenders consortium? Yes. Y'all check on it, sir.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
That was all I had.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items. Can, Mr. Manager, can we connect with, I believe it was Mr. Williams on just the various? Couldn't, I couldn't hear you. Could we connect with Mr. Williams on the various ways to apply for event funding and such?
Of course. And I believe he mentioned he's in touch with Ms. Carter.
Okay.
And, yeah, I'll make sure they're, they're connected. That's in Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Great. We do have a special events committee that, that reviews these and there's a process, making sure all the information's available. On the second item, Mr. Hollinger, I learn something new every day, every time you speak and I appreciate you coming forward. I, I would recommend, if, if there's no objection, or I'll make a motion to do an honorary designation. My understanding is that he's not asking to rename the road, but more a, a designated roadway sign on, on Campbell Street for Lilian Spencer, E. Lilian Spencer.
There's a motion on table in a second. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a suggestion in terms of process, consistent with what you're doing on the renaming, have us bring an item back for you to approve? We'd bring it back, tell you the details, how it works, and then you approve it based on that agenda item, if that's acceptable to you. So the motion would be-
Is that acceptable?
That's fine. Okay. Thank you.
All right. All those favorite, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, five zero. Mr. Matlow.
Um, man, that's all for me tonight.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything other than to wish everyone a happy holidays.
Mayor Pro Temp.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Couple of things I wanted to let you all know with Mr. Hollinger and Ms. Perkins here. They have chosen me to be one of their trailblazer honorees at the gala on January 16th, the, the Civil Rights Museum Gala. And I also have been selected by the Swanee River Area Boy Scout Council as one of their Golden Eagle nominees and that will be in May.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, along the renaming, wanted to ask if we could get an agenda item back regarding the renaming of Osceola Street, the east side of Osceola Street from Althea Gibson Way to Adams or Rudy Hubbard, Rudy Hubbard Way. As you all know, Coach Rudy Hubbard won a national championship at Florida A&amp;M. And he was also inducted into the Black College Hall of Fame and the mayor actually honored him with the proclamation and a key to the city. And so Coach Hubbard is getting up there in age and I think that is fitting and I've, I've had a conversation with him that this would be something that he would appreciate. And so I would like to bring it forward that we, and I'd ask for an agenda item to come back about what we would need to do. It is a city street. We would need to do to rename that part of Osceola for Rudy Hubbard, Rudy Hubbard Way.
I would second that, Mr. Mayor. He used to be my racquetball, my racquetball partner.
The motion on the table, it's seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? We're seeing the agenda item as well. All those favorite signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero.
And I'd like to say, take upon a personal privilege to congratulate my granddaughter, who will be graduating on Saturday with her undergraduate degree from Florida A&amp;M, continuing the family legacy. She is fourth generation FAMU, I believe. I think that's, that's, I think that's right. She's fourth generation. So she'll be graduating on this weekend and we're very excited. My mom is from, she's come from the cold north to the cold south to celebrate with us. So she's, she's in town for the celebration we'll have this weekend. And then finally, thank you all for your prayers and your support. On, on Sunday, the 15th, will be the one-year anniversary of my husband's liver transplant. And things are going well. Thank you all.
All right. With nothing else, we stand adjourned.